Councillors, please stand. Almighty God, we, the representatives, the citizens of the city of Brisbane, are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask you to guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. We acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pay our respect to elders past and present. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? No apologies. Councillors, the confirmation minutes, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,628th meeting held on Tuesday 1st September 2020 be received, taken, as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landis, seconded by councillor Hutton, that the minutes of the 4,628th meeting held on 1st of September 2020 be received, taken, as read and confirmed. All those in favour, please say aye and raise your hand. Thank you. Again, please say no and raise your hand. Thank you.
No.
Councillors, a draw to your attention, question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Chair of any standing committees? Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, following huge support from Brisbane residents on our trial to relax rules around braziers and fire pits, council will now continue this safe use long enough for a permanent change to be made. Can you update the chamber on the response received? And what will this mean for the use of fire pits in Brisbane in future?
The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, for the question, and through you to councillor Davis for asking it. Definitely, I confirm today that council will move to amend the local law that relates to outdoor braziers and fire pits to make sure that safe use of these devices can go on in an ongoing basis or in an ongoing way across the city. Until now, we have a situation where certain parts of the city could do this, but others could not. In rural areas, this has been permitted for many, many years. But in other parts of the city, there has been effectively a blanket ban on fire pits and braziers, with the exception of those being used for cooking. Now, according to the law, it's not enough to have a couple of marshmallows roasting. You actually have to be cooking food, cooking a meal. And so, under those circumstances, those outdoor fires are permitted. And what we've effectively done now is to remove the requirement to cook food and allow people to take advantage of outdoor fire pits in a safe manner across the city, following the results of our trial during winter. This is something that our team, Team Shrinna, has discussed and has good widespread support across the city. Councillors, right in every part of the city, right across the city, have been receiving feedback on this. Council itself, as an organisation, has received feedback. And it's fair to say that the results have been overwhelmingly in support of the ongoing use of fire pits and braziers. Now, obviously, there are conditions associated with the use of these devices to ensure that it's done safely. And those conditions include having a minimum distance between neighbouring properties, not having overhanging vegetation anywhere in a way that could catch fire. The type of materials that can be burnt in these fire pits is also subject to strict requirements. And to be clear, if people are burning toxic materials, if people are causing a serious smoke nuisance, that is illegal, and that will remain illegal going forward. And that's an important distinction to make. If residents are burning the wrong things, that is still illegal, and nothing will change in that respect. However, if they're doing so and using these fire pits in a safe manner, they are burning clean, dry firewood or charcoal, and they've appropriately positioned their fire pits and braziers, those fire pits and braziers meet council requirements, then that is something that can continue on. And so, today, I confirm that the trial that was due to, just occurred during this winter, will now continue on until we update the local law. We will be working to move as quickly as possible to update the local law. As councillors would be aware, this is a process that can take some time. Updating a local law has some very set legislative timeframes and requirements, and so we will go through those. It will also involve further community consultation. There will be an opportunity through the local law update for people to provide submissions, and that is another opportunity which will be coming up through that review. In the meantime, people can continue to take advantage of this opportunity in a safe manner. And I have to say, I want to thank the people of Brisbane for the way in which they've approached this trial. It was one of those things where the vast majority of people did the right thing. They used their fire pits responsibly. Most people did so in a way that's courteous to their neighbours. And there's even been some new business opportunities popping up as a result of this. Today, when I was out talking to some residents about this, it came to my attention that a local teenager had started a business called Jimmy's Firewood, supplying clean, dry firewood to local residents who wished to take advantage of the trial. So not only has it been a great way to spend winter gathered together with family and friends, but also there's been a couple of business opportunities for some enterprising young people in Brisbane here come out of it. So I would simply say to the people of Brisbane, thank you for having your say to this point. Thank you for the safe and responsible way that the vast majority of residents have approached this trial, and we look forward to continuing the safe operation of fire pits and braziers in our city going forward, and also implementing some local law changes to help facilitate that safe use in the future. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further questions? Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, when COVID-19 hit, you jumped the gun and announced a two-year wage freeze for all council staff. Meanwhile, the federal government staff award went up in June by 1.75%. The state government is also increasing theirs by 1.75%, yet you are putting a hold on the wages of council employees. No government has proposed a wage freeze as dramatic as you have. Experts say that freezing pay for low-paid workers in particular during a crisis is economically destructive. Lord Mayor, will you admit today that you made a bad call in the heat of the moment and reversed your position on a pay freeze for council workers?
The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, for the question. What I will say is that the right call was made. 100% the right call was made. And I absolutely and firmly stand by that call. And there's a really good reason for it, Mr Chair, and that is because we have worked very hard to keep council officers employed. We have worked very hard to make sure that services can continue to be provided for our city, and that is the appropriate thing in a time of crisis. Now, Labour councillors are a little bit sheltered from the reality of this crisis, it appears. They think that we are somehow in some minor blip and that everyone should get a pay rise. The reality is, that pay rise has to come out of the pockets of the ratepayers of Brisbane who are doing it tough. It doesn't just magically appear. But also, at this time, the priority has been keeping council staff employed. There are other governments and other organisations and businesses who are shedding staff, who are reducing staff pay, who are reducing staff hours. There are a lot of people, thousands upon thousands of people, out of work. And so, our commitment to the-
So are you. So are council casuals losing-
Our commitment to the people of Brisbane and to the ratepayers of Brisbane and to the staff of Brisbane City Council is that we will do everything possible to make sure that services can be, continue to be provided, but to keep the cost of living down as well. Now, we know what Labour believes, because they will come out at the state government level and say they support a pay freeze, yet then they will award pay rises to their union mates. This is the way it works down in George Street, and so we know that the Labour councillors just want to do sweet deals with their union mates. Now, we do not believe that the people of Brisbane, the ratepayers of Brisbane, should be penalised with higher rates at a time when they are struggling because of Labour's financial mismanagement. The way that they operate governments at all levels can only be described as mismanagement. And I can tell you-
For federal government.
-that the staff in Brisbane City Council have done a fantastic job, but by the same token, our commitment to them has been to keep them employed. And we've even put in place special arrangements for casuals as well, where, for example, casual bus drivers were, we had special arrangements put in place so that they could continue to get paid, even in situations where they weren't required to come to work. And so, we've been working really hard to do the right thing by our staff, and we will continue to do the right thing. But reality is, the money has to come from somewhere. The council has been hit to the tune of more than $180 million in terms of reduced revenue, and we have made responsible decisions that will help ensure that our staff remain employed and that we can keep providing those essential services out in the suburbs. So councillor Cook, through you, Mr Chair, I believe 100% that we made the right decision on this. The other factor that you should consider as well is that the current EBA is coming to an end. And so, in other cases, there had been previous pay rises agreed to, which the government then backed down on. And so, in this case, we have this situation where this year, the EBA with our staff comes to an end. So we haven't committed to any further pay rises at this point, and then gone back on it like the state government did. Because that's the very, that is a very important distinction that you have to draw here. The state government had committed to a pay rise, and then they went back on it. They then tested that in a tribunal, I understand, and it was found that they had already committed and they should receive their pay rise. This is a different situation in Brisbane City Council. The current EBA comes to an end this year, and we are simply saying that we want to keep staff employed and we want to keep pay at the same level as it is, so that we can continue providing those great services with our staff employed right across the city, doing a great job. And I want to thank the staff of Brisbane City Council for what they're doing. They do a fantastic job, and they've approached this challenge with such a positivity and innovation, a great innovative spirit in adapting the way that they work, and we value the work that they do. But also, we know that the staff value having a job at this time.
Further questions? Councillor Hutton.
My question is to the Chair of the City Planning and Economic Development Committee, councillor Adams. Councillor Adams, we've recently seen the state government fast-track a number of priority development areas at Castle Dine, Uranga and Oxley in my ward of Jamboree. What concerns does this administration have when it comes to pushing fast developments like this, which don't have the checks and balances of an application that goes through council for assessment?
Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Hutton for the question. I know there is keen interest from yourself on the progress of the Oxley PDA, or, as we like to call it in planning, the Oxley Priority Destruction Area as well, because high among this administration's concern is the significant removal of vegetation on this site, but we will come to that. From the outset, I want to be crystal clear, we absolutely support the fast-tracking of major projects, including those within the building and construction industry. We know how important it is for the jobs that are created, the cash flow that's introduced as a result of these projects. It's a very important piece in the city's economic recovery, and it needs to be supported. But what we don't support are some of the ways these projects are being delivered, namely through the creation of priority, apparently, development areas, but ending up more of destruction areas. Through the Economic Development Act of 2012, the state have the ability to declare unused land they own as a PDA. The land can be used for any type of development. To the state's credit, they do usually match the proposed use of land with the location of the site. So, for example, the Hurston Quarter, mixed-use public health facility adjoining the Royal Brisbane Women's Hospital, absolutely. But this is where the good times stop, because the assessment of these developments does not have the scrutiny or the proper process applied like every development application that is assessed by our city plan. As mentioned, councillor Hutton has raised a number of concerns with the Oxley PDA and a few points that I'd like to highlight today as well. Firstly, the traffic and transport management. The report for the Oxley PDA outlines that when constructed, this site will result in an increase of 1,095 vehicle movements per day in and out of the site. If this was being assessed by council, there would be significant trunk infrastructure that that applicant would need to provide for the local area to cater for this increased density.
Do it. They're all council roads.
We only see minor upgrades proposed to the existing roundabout, no works planned for the rail overpass down the road, one of the main funnelers of the traffic in the area. Secondly, councillors would be aware of our careful consideration of tree removal, particularly our protected trees, and on the rare occasion that removal does need to happen, offset planting would be followed at a ratio of three to one, meaning for every tree removed, three new ones would need to be planted. There are nearly 700 well-established trees within the Oxley PDA, many over 100 years old. This would equate to nearly 2,000 new trees in Oxley if the state government were to play by the city plan rules, but instead, there won't be any offset planting at that level. The same happened in Castle Dine as a part of the Fitzgibbon PDA, and we know Amanda Cooper has been highlighting the failed attempt of the state government in developing that land. It seems the state member for Aspli couldn't protect the land at Beckett Road in Bridgman Downs, as well as the land on Beams Road in Castle Dine. Obviously, local residents need a change in their MP in Aspli if they want bushland protected. In addition to this, in 2018, there were some amendments to the Environment Protection Act of 94, which included a provision to exclude offences of environmental nuisance caused by development carried out under a PDA development approval. This is a basic condition that council would apply to large-scale developments in Brisbane. They would need a construction management plan to deal with the nuisance, but of course, PDAs are exempt from that. Councillors would be rightly outraged if we stopped conditioning large-scale developments to submit construction management plans. They are there to keep neighbourhoods functioning and residents satisfied that the project is acting within reasonable bounds. Council has made it clear in the past that the process for PDAs needs a lot of work when it comes to their assessment. Council provides feedback on each PDA. By all means, we are given the opportunity to make comments, but nine times out of 10, this advice is ignored. And again, we see the usual build it and flip it out to somebody else to make the money and move away without having to deal with the issues that are then left to council to clean up the mess. Not let's forget, maybe council could do the work with the infrastructure charges that we received from the priority development areas. Any question about how much that amounts to? Zero. Zero infrastructure charges. Regardless, we'll keep a close eye on these priority destruction areas, and I know that Amanda Cooper, soon-to-be member for Aspli, and councillor Hutton will do that for the months ahead, and we wish them well in that as well.
Deputy Mayor, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, back in April, you made a questionable and rushed announcement to freeze the wages of all council staff for two years. This decision defies the logic of many economic experts. History tells us that stunting wage growth in the public sector during an economic crisis can be detrimental to any recovery. Expert reports show that when the GFC hit, misguided public sector wage freezes slowed recovery in private sector wages. In one report, chief economist Dr Richard Dennis said, according to the ABS, $1 million spent by public servants on local goods and services created more jobs than $1 million used for capital works. You say you want to lift Brisbane out of this crisis, put your face on the city's economic recovery plan and spruik big flashy projects, but really, your decision to freeze wages will do more harm than good. Lord Mayor, will you admit to the people of Brisbane that you really don't understand economics?
The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, for the question. The irony of a question like that from the Labour Party is not lost on any of us. Apparently, the Labour Party understands economics, and the economics that they understand is that you should keep employing more and more and more public servants and more and more ministerial-
Talking about a wage freeze.
More and more and more. And guess what? The poor suckers of Queensland are ended up, are forced to pay for that, because that's what happens just up the road at George Street. We know that the wage bill of ministerial staffers and ministerial officers is now $28 million, and it's going up and up and up, and the number of ministerial staffers and advisers keeps going up and up and up. And this is Labour's way of dealing with an economic crisis, to try and employ more-
The Mayor, that is a point of order.
Yes. Chair, could you bring the mayor back to the question, please? We're not talking about state government here.
We're talking about government, the question is clearly about government wages and their effect on the economy. The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And you-
I was about, I was about the Lord Mayor not knowing anything about economics.
Thank you. Lord Mayor, please continue.
Councillor Cassidy, through you, Mr Chair. I duxed economics at school, and I also started at university. I'm not sure about you, but it was actually my favourite subject, and I'm passionate about economics. And you can see, because my record as financier and as Lord Mayor has been responsible financial management, and not theoretically speaking like councillor Cassidy is, but actual responsible financial management. And in order to keep the budget strong and balanced, you need to make difficult decisions. You need to have trade-offs. And in this case, the trade-off is really simple. Do we keep our staff employed, or do we give them a pay rise and have to reduce the number of staff? Because that is the reality. That is the reality of the situation. And there are councils-
Don't you cut the ads, Bill.
There are councils across Australia who have had to let go a lot of staff. This is a reality. This is a serious situation. But we've pulled out all stops to make sure that we continue to keep our staff employed and that we continue to pay them at the same level that they're getting paid. So, to be clear, we're not talking about a reduction in pay like many businesses and organisations are facing. We are simply talking about pegging the pay levels at their current rate for a two-year period. And so, that is a, I think, completely reasonable approach in the worst economic and financial crisis we have seen in our lifetime, because that is the reality. And so, keeping people employed is the important thing here, and making sure that we respond in a financially and economically sensible way is a top priority. It has always been my priority, but now more than ever. And just remember, because the Labour Party has come in again and again and criticised any kind of cost-saving measures that we have introduced, anything that we have done to try and save money for the ratepayers of Brisbane, they have criticised. They're against it all. So they're against savings, they are advocating more spending, which is what they are clearly doing, yet we have still, in this council and in this budget-
You can save on advertising.
-a strong, balanced budget, and we believe in that. And that's part of our ongoing record. And even when we introduced a small surplus in the recent budget, Labour criticised that. They claim that we shouldn't have a surplus. This is the type of approach that we're taking. We only have to look at what happened yesterday up at the state to understand how Labour thinks when it comes to budgeting and economics. They, like, it was really quite remarkable that the number, the amount of debt racked up, extra debt racked up in just a few weeks exceeded the entire budget of Brisbane Metro in something like five or six weeks. They racked up $1.2 billion of extra debt. That's five or six weeks for the state government, and they didn't even blink. And they didn't stop there, because we have seen the overall state debt estimated at this point to go from $80 billion to over $100 billion, $101 billion in fact. But I know that we're only hearing a small part of the story there. I know that it would be much, much worse than that. I know that the news that was released yesterday by the Treasurer is trying to put the most positive spin on a diabolical budget position. And so, it is relevant. It is because councillor Cassidy himself raised this, Mr Chair. He raised comparisons to other levels of government. He raised the issue of staff pay at other levels of government. So it is appropriate that we talk about other levels of government. And so, what you can expect from this council is to do the right thing and the responsible thing so that we can keep staff employed, not so that we can do sweetheart deals with union mates, like Labour always does, but so that we can look after all of our staff, whether they're in a union or not. They deserve to have a job.
Are there any further questions? Councillor Tummi.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to Chair of City Standards, Community Health and Safety Committee, councillor Marks. Councillor Marks, we've heard in recent weeks claims from the opposition about a lack of funding and investment in their local wards. Can you please highlight some of the inaccuracies in the opposition's claims by pointing to works undertaken by your area of council?
Councillor Marks.
Yeah, thank you for the question, councillor Tummi, and thank you, through you, Mr Chair. Look, we regularly hear claims in this chamber about a lack of investment in opposition wards. One might think from the way that many of those in the opposition carry on projects funded in their wards simply don't exist. I mention this, Mr Chair, because I note with interest that there are, in fact, mediums where these councillors are very happy to acknowledge the significant investment made by this administration right across the city. The truth is, a phenomenal amount and level of investment in services or projects throughout our city and suburbs, regardless of councillor, which councillor represents the ward, happens. Now, I know previously that the leader of the opposition has trotted out his well-worn, effective outrage about council producing printed material to keep residents up to date on important projects in the area. And three, you, Mr Chair, the Lord Mayor was actually quite happy to point out a couple of weeks ago about the newsletters regularly produced at ratepayers' expense by those opposite with their names and faces.
Did you check the Quongs this week?
Now, as I know as a chair responsible for a portfolio, as a councillor who participates and listens intently in this chamber, there is a huge level of investment made by this administration. Being the local councillor for Runcorn, of course, I'm very familiar with the projects being made in my own ward, so I must admit through you, Mr Chair, to councillor Cassidy, that off the top of my head, these past months since the budget, I'm not as familiar with the funding committed in Deegan as I am in my own ward. But ignorance is no excuse, so I decided to find out. And I thought a great place to start, to begin with, would might be councillor Cassidy's own newsletter, helpfully prepared and distributed to his residents from his ratepayer-funded ward budget. Now, I know it's not usual to congratulate a councillor of a different party about great projects being delivered to their residents, but let me tell you, Mr Chair, I have no reservations in saying that the level of investment being made by this administration from my area of council in Deegan Ward this financial year is absolutely fantastic. Let's begin with some road designs and improvements. Newnham Road in Gibung, $356,000. Zilmia Road in Zilmia, $387,000. Rockin Road in Tigam, $261,000. Flinders Parade in Sandgate, $390,000. And more. All of these, as through you, Mr Chair, the councillor for Deegan has called big flashy projects. In fact, total spending on road resurfacing projects across Deegan Ward is about $3.7 million. A real win for the residents out that way. Let's look at the Curbin Channel projects. Finney Rogan and Deegan, $47,000. Lakes Lansborough Avenue in Boondle, $68,000. Wakefield Street in Sandgate, $117,000. Bread and butter work to improve amenity for the residents of Deegan, delivered by our fantastic offices and field services. Moving briefly, moving briefly into some projects outside of my own portfolio, Mr Chair, we see hundreds of thousands of dollars committed to local parks improvements. Again, I would suggest big flashy projects, as the councillor of Deegan refers to any work being undertaken, like the Decker Park in Brighton, Mulbean Park, Dog Park, Boondle Wetlands, Sandgate Memorial, Sandgate Four Shores, Second Lagoon and Low Mura. Once again, hundreds of thousands of dollars committed to environmental projects. We see almost $200,000 in funding for bridge repairs and a drainage project at Lloyd and Vauxhall Streets for the value of almost three-quarters of $1 million. A win for residents. Through you, Mr Chair, councillor Cassidy is quite happy to spruik the Lord Mayor's investment in his ward, but only when he gets to put his own name and face on the ratepayer-funded material.
Further questions? Councillor Shree.
Thanks, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, you're no doubt aware of the very strong support for separated bike lanes within the GAB ward, and in particular, of the need to prioritise a safe separated bike facility along Volcher Street from West End to South Brisbane. Do you agree that this is a high- Do you agree that this is a high priority for cycling infrastructure on the inner south side? And can you give the chamber any indication on when cyclists riding from West End to South Brisbane might be able to do so safely?
For Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question through you, Mr. Chair. Definitely, there are there are a number of priorities when it comes to cycling. And I I always enjoy seeing the great cycling uptake figures from the Gav Ward. There's actually maybe councils would not be aware that West End in particular has the highest number of cyclists of any suburb in Brisbane, which is a great thing. And a credit to the investment in bike infrastructure and bikeways and facilities of successive administrations, but particularly in recent years where my administration and my predecessors' administrations have really increased the investment in these type of facilities. And so the key now is connecting up existing facilities. And so whether it is connecting up the Woolongaba Bike Way at each end with other facilities or whether it's connecting people into the CBD, we're focused on a number of projects and priorities. Right now, one of the top priorities, and it relates to the people of your ward, Counselor Shree, is to get a safe separated connection from West End through South Brisbane into the CBD and then to have safe bike lanes in the CBD. We know that is a big destination for many people from your ward, Counselor Shree. And that is why we are working now in partnership with the state government to deliver the Citylink Cycleway. This cycleway will connect through from Melbourne Street across the Victoria Bridge and then into the CBD with.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order to you, Counselor Shree.
Sorry, un-relevant. The the question was quite specifically about Vulture Street. And I appreciate the mayor's comments about the CBD bike lanes, but it's really about Vulture Street and whether he considers that a priority.
I understand that. The Lord Mayor does have five minutes. And my my memory of West End and the inner south isn't super, but I think that that it's one of those roads that does intersect with the line that the Lord Mayor was talking about. But I would ask the Lord Mayor to just take a moment to remind the Lord Mayor that it was about a very specific piece of infrastructure, the Lord Mayor.
Oh, thank you. And look, Mr. Chair, the the local council was asking about what I see as the priorities. I was actually explaining that the number one priority at the moment is to get that Citylink Cycleway connected in, which will definitely benefit residents in Counselor Shree's ward. So that is number one priority. And I understand that he sees the Vulture Street connection as a high priority. And I'm aware of his feedback on that and the feedback of a number of residents in his ward about that connection. And I certainly would never suggest that it is a low priority. But I'm simply saying right now, the the high priority is the Citylink Cycleway and connecting in existing cycleways as well. Now, one of the things about Vulture Street is that we see the fantastic new Woolongaba Bike Way as a connection at one point of Vulture Street into that corridor. And so, as I was mentioning before, future connections linking up existing cycleways and bikeways are important. And we do consider them to be a priority. And we also consider that creating new crossings on the river is a priority as well. So whether it's Kangaroo Point Pedestrian Cyclist Bridge or the Breakfast Creek Pedestrian and Cyclist Bridge and then then the two West End bridges, we are very much focused on creating new connections and linking up existing bikeways and cycleways. So I acknowledge the council's views on this. And as I repeat again, I certainly do not see that as a low priority. And I just reconfirm that right now, our top priority is to get that Citylink Cycleway built and connected.
Further questions? Counselor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is to the Chair of Infrastructure Committee, Counselor McLaughlin. Counselor McLaughlin, drawing on funds provided by the federal and state governments, the Infrastructure Division is coordinating a range of job generating COVID-19 economic recovery projects alongside specific road safety improvements. Can you please tell us about these projects, particularly those being delivered in Programme Two?
Counselor McLaughlin. Counselor McLaughlin, please turn on your microphone.
My apologies, Mr. Chair. I did press unmute. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, I thank Counselor Hammond for the question. During last week's council meeting, Counselor Allen and I highlighted some of the COVID-19 economic recovery projects that will soon be creating jobs and work in many parts of the city. Council's Infrastructure Division is taking the lead in coordinating submissions for state and federal government stimulus grants. And it's certainly been an interesting process that has highlighted the organisation's capacity to adapt and work together to make the best of federal and state government economic stimulus funds that have been made available, like the Infrastructure Investment Programme, the Local Road and Community Infrastructure Programme, the Works for Queensland Package and the United and Recovery Package. While these submissions have certainly included road and transport projects, some upgrades in these proposals fall within other council programmes with some separate funding. As Counselor Allen outlined last week, many of the projects for which we have secured stimulus funding are improvements to community facilities or work to preserve our conservation reserves. I'd like to thank all council staff and for their prompt service in preparing these submissions. And we've been successful in in many of those submissions. While the Infrastructure Division has been coordinating these works, it's also been busy, Mr. Chair, gearing up for delivery of upcoming projects through the federal government's Urban Congestion Fund. This, Mr. Chair, was a fund announced in 2019, a $4 billion commitment by the federal government to support priority road upgrades over the next 10 years. And this couldn't have come at a better time to be realised at this stage, a matter of months before the pandemic that would cause such untold damage to the economy and to the construction industry. Mr. Chair, works in the construction in the Urban Congestion Fund are about keeping our transport network flowing and making travel safer, whether it be by car, by bus, bicycle, all walking, walking. Mr. Chair, 26 upgrades are being delivered in Queensland. And in Brisbane, we're fortunate to be co-funding nine of these projects. Today, I'd like to highlight two of the projects, one in Brackenridge and the other in Mount Gravat East. Beginning with that project on the north side, Hoyland Street in Brackenridge, a key east-west arterial route connecting Gimpy Arterial Road and the Gateway Motorway, linking the Moreton Bay area to the northern Brisbane suburbs. The majority of the Hoyland Street corridor has two lanes in each direction, except for a 900 metre section between Cluver Street and Brackenridge Road. This is a section that that will be targeted through this upgrade, increasing its capacity to two lanes in each direction to align with the rest of the corridor. This will help fix the bottleneck at the Hoyland Street Strathpine Road intersection and reduce congestion to add the entries to Gimpy Arterial Road. This project will also improve safety and access for active travellers. Traffic signal phasing at the intersection of Hoyland Street and Cluver Street will be upgraded to provide safer crossings for pedestrians and cyclists. Council is currently in detailed design and plans to start delivery of this work early next year. South of the river, council and the federal government will be upgrading the Newman Road and Weka Road intersection in Mount Gravat East. This intersection is prone to crashes with 18 crashes being recorded at this spot in a five year period. Thirteen of these crashes resulted from drivers making unsafe right turns from Newman Road into Weka Road. And to fix this, Mr. Chair, the upgrade will construct new right turn lanes on both roads and implement a dedicated right turn arrow to control movements. To create a safer environment for pedestrians and cyclists, a signalised pedestrian crossing will be installed and improvements will be made to footpaths, shared paths and existing pedestrian crossings. The upgrade is planned to commence construction in mid 2021. As always, council will prioritise local contractors for both of these projects. And I'm pleased to say we're expecting to generate 82 jobs just in these two upgrades. Mr. Chair, this is an exciting programme of work. So I'd like to thank the Australian Government for its generosity and support as planning for these two and the other urban congestion funds upgrades progress. I'll be sure to update the chamber accordingly. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further questions? Counselor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, in council's annual report for the 1920 financial year, which is being tabled in today's council meeting, your remuneration was $308,000. On top of that, you received a cash allowance of almost $100,000. The CEO was paid just shy of $800,000, an awful lot of money. Some of council's lowest paid staff are getting a little over $50,000 a year. Yet before any enterprise agreement negotiations to increase their wages could start, you jumped the gun and announced that these people's wages would be frozen for two years. You sit in your ivory tower and deny over 8,000 hardworking council employees a pay rise. You claim it's to save money in an economic crisis, but economic history shows that public wage freezes actually have a detrimental effect on economic recovery. Lord Mayor, will you reverse your poor decision and unfreeze wages? And also hand back your $100,000 allowance as a gesture of goodwill?
To Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The answer to the question is no. And the whole basis of the question, the whole premise of the question is incorrect. Because as I've repeatedly said, it is the responsible thing to do to keep people employed at the moment. That is the critical thing. And we know Counselor Cassidy is quoting some expert who I've never heard of in some kind of obscure way. But I can tell you that one thing is.
Richard Dennis, you can't have been a very good economics student.
No, 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 no. Please allow the answer without silence.
One thing is clear, that if the link is broken between employer and employee, that is a far more serious problem than for any kind of freeze to wages or any kind of holding of the pay rate at the current level. A far more serious problem. And that's exactly why our side of politics has been working hard at both levels of government, at both the federal level and the council level, to keep that link between employer and employee intact. That's why the Jobkeeper Programme exists. It exists so that rather than businesses letting go of tens of thousands or even hundreds of thousands of staff and then those staff being left to drift, they are still on the books of those employers. And as the employers, as their businesses can gear up again, they can reactivate those staff members. And it's keeping that link intact that is the most economic important strategy right now. And so council has done exactly that. We have worked really hard to keep that link strong, to keep our workers employed. And that will continue. We know that things may, as I said last week, things may deteriorate further before they get better. And so responsible financial management is critical because you need that buffer zone to make sure that we are prepared for any further shocks or further reductions or further economic hits that may be coming our way. And we know that that is exactly the opposite to what the Labour Party does at other levels of government. And it is exactly the opposite to what the Labour Party is doing at the state level of government. They have blown out the budget massively. The budget was blown even before COVID, but it is blown so badly now that you would have to think that it'd be my great, great grandchildren that will see the prospect of an economic recovery in Queensland if we keep going at this rate and keep having Labour management of our state. Because it's not anytime soon, this level of financial incompetence that we've seen will take generations to recover from. Whereas council is exactly in the opposite position. We have a balanced budget. We are in a strong position to manage our, to keep our staff employed going forward and to provide essential services and also to invest $800 million this financial year into capital works and building projects. So building infrastructure, supporting jobs not only in council but also for local business. That's what we're focused on. Our local buy procurement policy supports jobs not only in council but also in local business. And so we're doing what we can as a council to keep our local economy strong, to keep our staff employed. And as I said earlier, managing a $3.1 billion budget requires some tough decisions to be made. I would love to be able to give everyone a pay rise. But having said that, the councillors in this organisation and the managers are signed up to exactly the same arrangement as all staff, which is none of us, none of us from the top down will get any kind of pay rise for the next two years. That is a responsible thing to do because it's one rule for everyone and that is the appropriate thing. But that rule exists so that we can keep our staff employed. They can keep doing the fantastic work that they do for the people of Brisbane. And as I said, the feedback from the staff has been that they appreciate having a job in these uncertain times. We know that the the normal turnover rate in an organisation like council, so each year, the the number of staff that might choose to leave council for various reasons is weighed out. People appreciate having a job in council. They appreciate doing work for the community. And they're certainly not contacting me at this point in time in the same way that Labour's suggesting, demanding a pay rise. They are just grateful that we are supporting them in their jobs to continue providing services for the people of Brisbane.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. And also, that includes question time.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order to you, Counselor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I'd move the suspension of standing orders to allow me to move the following urgency motion, which will be sent in one second, that the Lord Mayor immediately instructs council's enterprise bargaining team to negotiate a wage increase in good faith with council's employees.
I have an urgency motion moved by Counselor Cassidy, seconded by Counselor Cook. I've been assured that it's been transmitted to CCLO and will be transmitted to all council members in a moment. Counselor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. And the Lord Mayor has just said now during question time that tough decisions have to be made when dealing with the COVID economic crisis. But apparently it wasn't too tough to decide to continue to advertise himself while announcing a wage freeze for some of the lowest paid workers in council. This is urgent today, Chair, because just last week, our country officially went into recession and public wage freezes have proven to be detrimental to any economic recovery. It is urgent because the Lord Mayor's decision to freeze council employees' wages for two years will only make this problem worse, not just here in Brisbane, Chair. This will have broader ramifications right around the southeast corner. The longer this wage freeze lasts, the longer it will take for Brisbane's economy to bounce back from this crisis. We need council at the negotiating table and they need to be instructed immediately to get a decent outcome for the Brisbane economy. Chair, this is urgent because economic experts say a two year wage freeze for Brisbane City Council workers would reduce their career earnings by over $100,000 and superannuation accumulations by nearly $18,000. That would be devastating for some of the lowest paid workers here in our council. Chair, this is urgent because it has been revealed today that the Lord Mayor and CEO were paid around $1.2 million combined in the last financial year. And council's lowest paid staff are those that will suffer the most from this wage freeze. Chair, this is urgent because the Lord Mayor is spruiking big flashy cost blowout projects such as Brisbane's Ticket to Recovery. But as mentioned previously, $1 million spent on public sector workers. Spending that money in local shops, creating local jobs, will create more jobs than $1 million spent on capital projects. And those capital projects are years away, if ever at all, Chair. This is urgent because the Lord Mayor clearly doesn't understand economics, as just demonstrated in his previous answer. He has made a very detrimental mistake. And if we don't do something now as a council, that will have a devastating effect on Brisbane's recovery from this crisis.
I'll now put the resolution. All those in support of the matter of urgency, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you. And all those against, please say no and raise your hand.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
All by Counselor Cook and Counselor Cassidy. Please ring the bells. Councillors, all those in favour of urgency, please say aye, raise your hand and hold it there so that it may be counted.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And all those against, please say no, raise your hand and hold it there so that it may be counted.
No.
No.
Thank you. Clerks, please read the result when you are ready.
Mr. Chair, the nos have it. The voting being six in favour, 20 against and one abstention.
The nos have it. Councillors, the-
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm just checking about the ringing of the bells. There are, not everybody is actually in the meeting at the moment, but you rang the bells for about 10 seconds there. I'm just checking, is there some reason they're not ringing for two minutes? If we're not all here.
All councillors are in the meeting. I can say 27. I'll now move to the Establishment and Coordination Committee, please, the Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 31st of October 2020 be adopted.
Seconded.
Been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the Deputy Mayor, the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday the 31st of August 2020 be adopted. Is there any debate?
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Yes, could I just ask at the outset that some of these items be taken seriously and full debate? And I'll just read through them now. So in one block together, clause A, D, J and L.
A, D, J and L.
Yes, the second group, B, F and H.
B, F and H.
And then everything else, which will be C, E, G, I, K, M and O together for voting.
I'll repeat this back. Seri item for debate and voting will be in these groups. A, D, J, L first, B, F, H second and the others third. Are there any, before we continue, are there any other seri items? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not seri item, but I have some questions for further information.
Okay.
Thank you. I have three. With respect to item N, the Storybridge contract cancellation, what is the cost of that project expended to date? That's item N, Storybridge contract cancellation. What is the cost of the project expended to date? Item E, with respect to the contract for JC Deco, how does council define the public interest exception? I'd like a description of what council's public interest exemption actually is there. That relates to bus advertising licensing. And item G, with respect to the sale of the property at, I think it's Beatty Road, how long has council owned the land and is it used for any purpose at the moment?
Thank you, councillor Johnston. I'll refer those three questions to the Lord Mayor. We had a discussion in this meeting last week about the operation of section 41 of the meeting's local law. And there has been an attempt to seek further clarity around its operation, and that is ongoing. The Lord Mayor.
Mr. Chair.
Point of order to you, the Deputy Mayor.
Point of order. Yeah, can I just clarify, were those for debate and vote or just for voting?
I had each of, I have recorded each of those three for debate and vote.
Debate and vote. Thank you.
Just point of order on that, Chair. I was going to deal with this as I went through in the debate, that there will be some of those items for voting, seri item once we're in them. I just sort of put them for debate at the time. I can go through that now. I just thought I'd deal with that as we went through each block.
We'll make some concessions because there are quite a few, but would you please? So I need to do this so that the room understands what's happening. Seri item for debate will be A, D, J, L first, second, B, F, H, and then third, all other items. And now, I've just been advised that there will be some, beyond that, some of those will be taken seri item for voting. Councillor Cassidy, could I please ask for that advice now?
Yep, yes, I can do that, Chair. So in that first block, A, D, J, L, so that's for debates, for voting, I'll just ask that J be taken seri item and then A, D and L together in that block?
Yep.
B, F, H altogether for voting?
Yep.
And then in that third block, C, I, M, N and O together?
Yep.
Then E and G together?
Yep.
And then K by itself.
All right, I'm going to repeat this to the room. So it won't be debate I have stated, but this is for voting. When the voting occurs, it will be A, D and J together, followed by L. At the conclusion of the debate on B-
Sorry, Chair. A, D and L together and J on its own.
Well, that is why I repeat them back. A, D and L together and J alone. B, F and H together. And then it will be C, I, M, N and O together. E and G together and then K alone. Would anyone like me to repeat that?
Point of order-
Further seri items and separations.
Yeah, at this stage, I certainly may have something, once I take all this in, I may have something further just for voting purposes and I will let you know as soon as I can.
Strictly that is allowed, but there is a lot and I just want to limit opportunities-
That's your colleague's fault, not mine. I'll let you know as soon as I can decide what's happening here.
No, no, I'm just saying that we're doing this in such a way to limit confusion. All right. No, any other further seri items? Lord Mayor. Also, Lord Mayor, can I remind you that in that order when you present your items, please, that we said it earlier? So general statements and then into A, D, J and L, please. The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I move to the items in front of us, I wanted to touch on a couple of matters. First of all, this week, or last Friday, marked the start of the Brisbane Festival. And I have to say, as far as I can understand, is the only major festival happening in Australia at the moment, which is a good thing because I know it's certainly something our community-
I would know about it.
And it was great to see the Brisbane Festival team continue to adapt their approach to make sure that they can continue to go ahead in a COVID-safe manner. And so whether it's holding events in a COVID-safe manner or whether it's having those suburban opportunities right across the city, I have to pay tribute to the team at Brisbane Festival, to the Chair of the Board, Alison Smith, to the artistic director, Louise Vazina, and to Charlie Kush, the CEO, for the great job that they have done in bringing it all together and making sure that the people of Brisbane have an opportunity to be involved in this celebration. Obviously, it's going to be different to previous years and there won't be the standard fireworks, river fire fireworks that we have all come to love and expect. Instead, there's a laser light show, which is spread over multiple nights to help spread down the crowds and give everyone an opportunity to participate and see what's involved. And as I mentioned before, the opportunity to have suburban events right across Brisbane is something that is very welcome. So I commend the team on that. And I also just wanted to say that the major city assets will be lit up in pink as well to celebrate that for our city. Friday, the 11th of September marks White Balloon Day. Organised by Bravehearts, this day aims to prevent child sexual abuse, assault and exploitation in our society and make Australia the safest place to raise a child in the world. The Storybridge will be lit up purple and white on Friday to support this amazing cause, an important cause. I do have some very sad news to share with councillors and it's in relation to a much-valued member of the Brisbane City Council team, Sharon Harvey from Library Services, who will be standing down from her role after an incredible period in this organisation, delivering so many fantastic library improvements and upgrades and such a passion when it comes to our libraries. And I'm sure most councillors have had the opportunity to work with Sharon over the 16 years she's been in the role and the 35 years that she's been with council, which is just an incredible achievement. Obviously, a lot has changed in libraries since 1985. Sharon started as a library technician at the Hamilton Library. At that time, each library worked very independently and library processes were also very manual. She served customers from behind a big desk, checking out books through a photo-charging machine, remember those? Sorting transaction cards, shelving, delivering holiday reading programmes and working on the mobile library and the home library service. Sharon went on to work as a team leader in multiple libraries. And in late 1996, she was appointed as the first team leader for the new Mount Omani Library, which opened in January 1997. The library was a great success under Sharon's leadership with exciting new technology in library spaces and very strong support from the local community who queued up on the opening day to embrace the new service. From there, Sharon became the first coordinator of information and reference in 1999 and senior coordinator of operations in 2001, before being appointed as the manager of library services in 2004. And so for the last 16 years, she has held that management role, which has been crucial in guiding us through the golden age of libraries in Brisbane, where there was record investment in upgrading libraries, building new libraries, and each new library that is either upgraded or delivered just gets better than the last one. And I'm always excited to see the progress that's made in our libraries field. And she's done a fantastic job overseeing council's 33 libraries, the mobile library, the pop-up library and the city archives. And so I want to thank Sharon on behalf of all of us for the incredible work that she's done for council. And I know that there are so many achievements, too many to list, and so many, I guess, proud moments. But one in particular that is close to all of our hearts is the Gold Star Reading Programme. And I know that all councillors love the Gold Star Reading Programme. It's a great opportunity to engage with local school students and even younger than that as well, in some cases, and just harness their passion for reading and to get people involved in reading and develop lifelong habits for reading. And Sharon took that idea and nurtured it and rolled it out right across the city. So it's a fantastic outcome and I know will be an enduring legacy. But also worth noting as well is that during the 2011 flood, the library services, sorry, library services was tasked to lead the MAX volunteer gathering that we now know as the Mud Army. And so this was the largest volunteering event in Australian peacetime history. And with less than 24 hours to prepare, under Sharon's direction, the library management team and staff from across the branch led, coordinated and collaborated to deliver what we now know as the legendary Mud Army that we are also proud of, looking back, that really demonstrated the true spirit of Brisbane. And so a lot of people are not necessarily aware that Sharon was leading that charge for the Mud Army and certainly something different to what she would normally do on a day-to-day basis in her role. But in 2013, she was awarded the Public Service Medal in the Queen's Birthday Honours for her service to Brisbane City Council. She will be greatly missed by so many of us and I certainly want to wish Sharon all the best for the future. Sharon retires on the 9th of October to join her husband on the Sunshine Coast, leaving an incredible legacy, not only to the benefit of council and library services, but also to the wider community. And I just wanted to leave this section of my remarks with a quote from nonetheless than Geraldine Knapp, former councillor and Chair overseeing libraries for a while. And Geraldine says, and I quote, "Without her zeal and zest for libraries, we would not have the service that we have in this city today." And I agree 100%, former councillor Geraldine Knapp, that is absolutely true. And thank you to Sharon for 16 years as a manager, the senior manager in this place, and 35 years of service to council. All the best for the future, Sharon. So moving on to the items in front of us, so items A, D, J and L. So actually, before I do, councillor Johnston asked some questions. And as I alluded to last week, these questions, I have an expectation the Chair will be equipped to answer and will provide appropriate answers. So the relevant chairs for each of those matters that were raised. So moving on to items A, D, J and L. So item A is the regular report of the Audit Committee in council. And that comes through to council each time the Audit Committee sits in this manner. Item D is the financial statements for last financial year as audited by the Queensland Audit Office. Again, this year, we've demonstrated strong and responsible management of council's finances. And once again this year, we have, as we will see later on in the reports, received an unmodified response from the Queensland Audit Office. And unmodified is exactly what we're looking to achieve or exactly what any large organisation is looking to achieve when they get their results or their response back from Queensland Audit Office. It used to be known as an unqualified response, but that was caused for confusion because they are very qualified. And it is now known as unmodified. So the Queensland Audit Office has signed off on our financial statements. And as we do every year, we submit our end-of-year financial statements for assessment.
Move for an extension.
An extension of time moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by councillor Landers. All those in favour, say aye and raise your hand. And all those against, please say no and raise your hand. The nos have it. Lord Mayor, 10 minutes.
Thank you. There's an interactive process that we go through with the Audit Office whereby if they have any questions of us or seek clarification, we answer those questions and provide further information. Also, they have the opportunity to make recommendations as well. And some of those items are referred to in the later report, which I think is at item item J in terms of the response letter from Queensland Audit Office. Obviously, there's some significant movements in the statement of financial position and cash flows and changes in equity as a result of the new Australian accounting standards that have flown through to a number of areas of council. And a big part of this is the changes in ways that revenue and leases are accounted for. And leases previously were treated in a different way, but progressively we've been adopting the Australian standard, the new Australian accounting standards. And leases are now reflected in a different way on the balance sheet. So there's some quite large movements as a result of that. These changes took effect on the 1st of July 2019, so the 1st of July last year. Item J I referred to was the response from the Queensland Audit Office relating to the statements that I have just referred to before. But I do want to thank both the Queensland Audit Office and the financial team in council, the budget team, the finance team, who do an incredible job in getting our statements finalised and submitted in a timely manner to the Queensland Audit Office, to working through the process with the Audit Office and to once again achieve an unmodified response or result from the Queensland Audit Office, which is yet another- an unmodified response or result from the Queensland Audit Office, which is yet another fantastic outcome in what has been obviously a challenging financial year, ending on the 30th of June. And to have those results back at this point in early September is a great outcome. I know a lot of other organisations take quite a bit longer to get their statements sorted out and to get the response back from the Audit Office, so I'm proud of our finance team for the work that they've done here. Sorry, Mr Chair, I'm just looking through my notes here for the final item, item L. Okay. Here we go. So item L obviously is the annual report. And it's a large document with an incredible amount of information. Once again, something that we bring through every year to council and providing a high level of reporting on a whole range of matters. And like I said, with the financial statements, this is taking an incredible amount of work by teams right across council. And to get this annual report submitted by early September relating to the financial year ending on the 30th of June is another fantastic outcome. I am proud of what council has achieved in the past 12 months to the 30th of June. There's been some incredible results, incredible progress made under what has been certainly, for the last six months, incredibly difficult and challenging circumstances. Circumstances that we have not seen in our lifetime. And it is a credit to the entire organisation for the work that they have done in achieving our corporate goals and also delivering for the residents of Brisbane. Whether it's the major projects that are being delivered, or whether it is the ongoing maintenance work that occurs across the city, whether it's the work in our libraries, whether it's the provision of public transport, all of the things that council does across so many areas are reflected in detail in this report. And it is a report that I am very proud of. And I once again want to thank the officers for bringing that together in such a timely manner to be presented to council in this way. So, Mr Chair, I'll leave my comments at that for those initial items. And obviously, we'll be speaking again in relation to the other groups of items that are coming forward.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks. Thanks very much, Chair. And I'll speak on all of these items and start on clause L, which is the annual report. There was a lot to get through in this report, Chair, but there are a few suspicious needles in a haystack that caught my eye. And I'll start off with executive salaries. Once again, the Lord Mayor enjoyed his $100,000 cash bonus to top up his annual salary in super of more than $300,000. Added to this, Chair, each of the committee chairs in council received an extra $20,000 as an allowance, no questions asked, no accountability, no receipts required. I called on the Lord Mayor for going his allowance, but he went quiet on that. I even tried to lead by example and offered a refund of the allowance that I'm afforded as leader of the opposition. When challenged to do so, I walked into the Lord Mayor's office to give it all back in cash. A lovely person at the desk even made a few calls but declined my offer. So I donated that cash to the bushfire appeal. I make a genuine bipartisan offer, Chair. Let's create an accountable system and really test how much of this cash the Lord Mayor and chairs of these committees really need. Moving on and up the pay chain, Chair, we have the CEO sitting at the top on a whopping $700 to $799,000 each and every year. And in fact, the top seven council executives get paid an eye-watering $3.7 million each and every year. This comes at the same time that the Lord Mayor is seeking to freeze the wages of 8,141 council staff, some earning as little as $50,000 or so each year. It's hypocrisy from this Lord Mayor, not willing to give up his $100,000 cash bonus, but willing to freeze any wage increases for council employees blaming nulling COVID-19. We know freezing wages in an economic crisis is unhelpful and counterintuitive. We should be filling the pockets of council employees with a reasonable wage rise to go out there and give to struggling small businesses. Instead, ratepayers are giving their dollars to large companies for these flashy projects. They will create jobs, of course, but many, many, many years away when we need them right now. Moving on to the list of key management personnel of council, Chair or KMPs, that have been paid for council work. These are either the Lord Mayor, councillors or CEO, or any officer in the executive management team. In the 2018-19 annual report, $282,000 was paid to companies owned by any of these people or family members for works in council or services. This financial year, this has gone up. Council has paid companies owned by key management personnel or their family members to a whopping $800,000. So the amount council awarded to private companies owned by a person in the key management team has gone up by over half a million dollars. One of the transactions listed, Chair, went to a company owned by KMP for design, data processing, print and mail services. And another was for digital advertising. Now, you're telling me, Chair, through you to the Lord Mayor, that there is a lack of digital advertising design or data processing agencies in Brisbane, forcing council to look within at a councillor's company or one of the family members of councillor's companies to give extra money to some of the highest-paid councillors, council staff or their family members? I don't think so, Chair. Also very concerning, the report doesn't mention at all which councillors or executives get paid for these jobs, the amount paid, or the names of these businesses. There is a complete lack of transparency in this Lord Mayor is giving ratepayers money to councillors and executives and not even supplying the details of that. This has been going on for too long and they've gotten too used to getting away with anything, Chair. Again, this work should not be done without the highest level of public scrutiny. We're using ratepayers' money. We should be open and transparent with them about who's getting it. These details must be published on council's website. When you look at the financial statements in here, it's an interesting story. Revenue is up, and yet there is still no genuine economic recovery plan for Brisbane. The so-called surplus for council was 0%, only bumped up by CBIC in the consolidated council figures, which is just council paying rent to council on assets that council owns. The Lord Mayor was more interested in this surplus on paper, while the community clubs out and the suburbs are struggling, closing down, footpaths remain broken and dangerous, and rates will rise twice in six months from January. This document lays bare how anemic council's response to COVID has been in the first half of this calendar year, Chair. This Lord Mayor treats his responsibility to the people of Brisbane as simply putting a few paragraphs in the annual report. You cannot stick your head in the sand and pretend it's not happening. Supporting small businesses is more than setting up a Facebook group. The fact that there were just 2,700 people in that group, or 27,000 calls to the business hotline suggests that people need real and tangible support, not hollow words. Delaying rates increases is not only kicking a can down the road, but it's setting businesses up to fail. On top of this, the Lord Mayor is seeking to suppress the wages of over 8,000 council employees who will inevitably spend less in local businesses. Getting Brisbane moving post-COVID should be a priority, Chair, but alarm bells should be ringing when reading this document. We've seen a dramatic shift to cycling in the past year, driven largely by COVID, and yet we see the Lord Mayor and councillor cat daddy deliberately dragging their feet in investing in a safe cycle grid here in the city and constantly and consistently blaming everyone and anyone for their failure to plan for and invest in suburban infrastructure like bikeways and footpaths. Bus patronage has fallen off a cliff to the lowest levels in decades, which will see Brisbane rapidly move from the second most congested city in Australia to the most congested city, an unenviable crown to have, Chair. The annual report says that action is required to get bus patronage to 90 million trips by 2021. That's an increase of almost 30 million trips in one year. Pigs will fly before then, Chair. There is big talk again about the Banana Bus Project, which has again been delayed due to the chameleon nature of it. Started out as a grand subway, it's not the 60 banana buses now, and we're not even sure if those busway extensions will eventuate. They have to be the most expensive banana buses anywhere in the entire world, Chair, and that will be councillor Shrinna's claim to fame. Lastly, there is a significant figure missing from this report in the section called corporate communication. That's the total dollar figure for the amount of corporate communication budget hijacked by the Lord Mayor to advertise itself and his administration in the lead-up to the last election. Well, today's Questions on Notice provided us an answer. We know that that is millions and millions of dollars, Chair. Revealed last week was that around $250,000 was spent on political polling and focus groups, designing the advertising the council undertook in the lead-up to the last election to make this Lord Mayor look good. This is more damning evidence of the politicisation of council's operations. Now, I'll take the point that councillor Marx was trying valiantly to make during an answer to a question. While I put a newsletter out with my face on it, the design and production and postage of that was around just over $4,000. The Lord Mayor has spent almost $2 million promoting himself, hijacking council's corporate communications. Therein lies the problem, Chair. On clause J, this Chair is an item that Labor councillors predicted. The Queensland Audit Office has raised some serious concerns surrounding this LMP administration's use of the bushland acquisition fund. Queensland Audit Office says that council has to improve transparency when it comes to making decisions about which bushland is acquired through the fund. This goes in hand with what we have been suspecting for the last few years. Something stinks, and this report confirms it. To find where the smell is coming from, we wrote to the Queensland Audit Office to take a closer look, and we have followed up with more detailed suggestions for them. We specifically mentioned how the land purchased for $6.2 million on Macquarie East, which was not known as Koala Habitat. We know that should have ecological evidence, and each land purchase needs to be based on that, but we don't have that information because that is withheld from the public. There's also a significant portion of the bushland levy that is not spent on actually buying land. In the past financial year, council collected over $32 million from ratepayers for the bushland preservation levy.
councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. An extension of time moved by councillor Strunk, seconded by councillor Griffiths. All those in favour, please say aye and raise your hand. And those against, please say no and raise your hand. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy, 10 minutes.
Thanks, Chair. So the last financial year, council collected over $32 million for ratepayers for the preservation levy, and the majority of that was spent on weeding and land maintenance. It is not the purpose of the fund, and it was never supposed to be used for anything apart from buying habitat that needs protection. The ratepayers of Brisbane need more transparency, so we congratulate the Queensland Audit Office for this audit report, and we'll be watching with great interest as they audit this fund even further. Clause D, Chair, this is a tale of historic debt and deficit coming home to roost and a dodgy surplus. Years and years of big flashy projects have consistently gone over budget and over time, and now the Lord Mayor has this weird obsession with his phony surplus on paper alone, in the midst of the worst economic crisis in 100 years, and it leaves you scratching your head. In 2008, this council was debt-free. Since then, the LMP has been racking that up. In 2018-19, this council was in debt by $1.9 billion. That's risen to $2.5 billion in just 12 months. A mighty increase rocketed along by cost-blow out some projects, including Kings and Smith Drive and the Brisbane Metro. Millions and millions and millions of precious ratepayer dollars are down the drain, and the projection is that this debt is only going to get worse and a lot worse. If we take a look at council's operating ratio, it appears we're in a surplus. However, when you take the City of Brisbane Investment Corporation out of the equation, we're projected to hit a negative 2% surplus in 2021, which in layman's terms is a deficit. But in a vain attempt to make the budget position look better, essential services are cut like curbside collection and community grants, Chair. And this all leads to the unenviable position for the people of Brisbane. The papers before us today show why this Lord Mayor's COVID response has been so weak. The financial liability ratios and sustainability ratios are shocking. The obsession on running a surplus propped up by CBIC assets is questionable when more support for the community is needed than ever before. This is the largest council in Australia, and the fact that this Lord Mayor continues to sit on his hands is a terrible indictment on our city. This is extremely concerning. The Lord Mayor is either willfully ignorant, or he's deliberately cutting corners while we're trying to emerge from COVID, Chair. Years of watched projects like Kings and Smith Drive, the zip line, the Brisbane Metro, and vanity projects like self promotion has put council in the position, and now in the middle of a crisis where it's harder to find the funds to help Brisbane recover. But it is not impossible. The papers confirm the revenue is up despite the COVID hit to the budget in the ankle to June quarter. This year, an extra $6 million was received from urban utilities and council bringing the total up to almost $200 million this last year. Council gets around 85% of that, and yet this Lord Mayor could only manage to offer a water rebate of $883,000 to struggling clubs and community organisations for water. It's a drop in the Pacific Ocean and a classic example of this LMP administration continuing to let the people of Brisbane down, Chair. The Lord Mayor likes to tell a story that his budget can't afford the proper support our community needs as we emerge from COVID, but it's clear the only problem we have in Brisbane is its leadership. Finally, on clause A, Chair, the report of the Audit Committee. This is another report with very, very light on detail. We know a disaster management report and assurance services update was tabled, and there was a discussion on council cyber security amongst other things, but there are no details about what these reports contain and what actions would be taken coming out of these reports. There are serious issues that the Audit Committee has been briefed on, yet elected councillors have been denied such information. There's simply not enough detail, and in clause A, for councillors to make a meaningful decision on. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Cunningham?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. I wish to speak on item J. Now, Mr Chair, just before I get to the specific report, a quick observation. The opposition likes to talk a big game when it comes to the environment, but this administration has the runs on the board. We have expanded and protected Brisbane bushland at a rate which has never been seen before. In fact, it was Lord Mayor Sally Ann Atkinson who started Brisbane's bushland acquisition programme in 1990. And we accelerated our programme last year to reach a target of 750 hectares protected in just four years. Since 1990, council has bought over 4,270 hectares into public ownership and protection, including Brisbane's most significant Koala habitat areas. Now, specifically to the report, council is incredibly transparent about our bushland acquisition programme and how the bushland preservation levy is spent. The opposition councillors conveniently forget, it seems, that every quarter, a report is tabled in council for all councillors to view. The Labor Party loves to push the myth that council is some spooky secretive organisation. Cue that scary music, Mr Chair. But when you compare the transparency of this level of government to what goes on down the road, to borrow a phrase from the leader of the opposition, it's hypocrisy writ large. Council has numerous criteria, corporate rules and other mechanisms which outline how decisions are made through the bushland acquisition programme. Council has corporate rules which deal with the purchase and compulsory acquisition of land. The rules outline the processes for all of council's land acquisition programmes, for the voluntary or compulsory purchase of land. These corporate rules articulate how council negotiates and acquires land in a way that demonstrates required transparency, value for money and compliance with all the relevant legislation. Council's current published budget provides a clear statement on the matters where bushland preservation levy funds can be expended. Council has documented criteria for properties to be purchased through the bushland acquisition programme. The criteria provide a consistent way to assess the priority of the acquisition of land. The criteria provide a consistent way to assess the priority of the acquisition of land and these are based on sound ecological and natural area planning criteria and are applied by suitably qualified expert council staff. Both planned future acquisitions and market opportunities that present from time to time are also assessed using this criteria. So I find the comments of the opposition councillors quite offensive to some of the best and brightest minds in council. The criteria for bushland acquisition for the record is: value for money, ecological corridors, consolidating natural areas, threatened ecosystems, threatened species, management issues where property will resolve a natural area management issue and habitat restoration. The delegation... Acquisition processes are also endorsed and documented as part of council's register of delegations. The criteria are clear, Mr. Chair, but of course there are also budgetary considerations as well. We've had an unprecedented accelerated programme, which is now finished, although we still have a significant programme. You know, it's been quite incredible seeing the opposition's campaign on Brackett Road this session, for example, given they spent the previous session complaining about bushland purchases in LNP wards. And who can forget that Labour spent... In the deputy mayor's ward campaigning for a purchase there before they decided they were against it. We have clear corporate rules, Mr. Chair. We are transparent and accountable to this chamber and I'm very proud of the work done by this administration to protect and expand our bushland in Brisbane. That's all, Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I rise to speak on items A, D, J and L. Firstly, with respect briefly to the Audit Committee report. This is an extraordinary report and it clearly indicates to me there is something wrong at council. There are 22 attendees at this meeting. That is hugely unusual. And obviously there were a lot of items discussed, although this report provides no details on them. There's talk in here though about difficult times with respect to meeting financial deadlines and I'm not sure. I've never seen language like that before. So I'm just not quite sure what the problem is with the annual audit minutes that are before us today. But the number of attendees is extraordinary and it indicates to me that something is not quite right with council. Now, the presentation and tabling of the audited financial statement and the auditor general's report for the year. Well, what a sorry state the finances of Brisbane are actually in. And I say that because the schoolboy politics that's going on about economics, you know, that's just ridiculous. But the fundamental problem we have here is the Lord Mayor refusing to acknowledge that this council is carrying an extraordinary level of debt, which under the LNP administration has risen from zero to 2.6 billion. And there are actually 3.3 billion in liabilities that this council actually has. There is a phenomenal problem with debt. And the Lord Mayor would pretend to just attack George Street. Yes, there's big debt there. The federal government, where it's so big, it's just unbelievable. He will not. You will not find him mention at any point that this council is in massive debt. Not only that, but in the last few years, they've put it on the spare bank card, put it in the bottom drawer, never to be paid down. That was about $500 million from memory. It's clear that there is an issue. The council is not meeting its targeted financial ratios when it comes to the river of debt that they are addicted to. The net financial liabilities ratio this year is forecast to be 208%. We're supposed to be less than 60%. And the next few years are just as bad in the high 200s. This council is racking up debt without taking any responsibility for paying it down. And that leads me to the annual report, just briefly. The last year has been one of the most incompetent and mismanaged by this administration in the 12 that I have been here. When I reflect on the big projects that this council has been wanting to deliver, they have catastrophically failed to do them in a value for money way for the ratepayers of Brisbane. Let's take councillor Cunningham's statements just a moment ago about the bushland levy and I'll mention that specifically in a minute. But the expenditure of $6.2 million for three residential blocks with a house on them that doesn't meet any of those criteria that were outlined there today. And we know that because there were no ecological reports. We know, you know, that there was a vague conversation that went on with someone in the someone in the RSPCA about koalas, which they then backtracked on. We just, the extent of mismanagement of council funds is horrific. Look no further than the metro. A $900 million project has blown out to $1.31 billion. That's a 30-plus percent increase in the cost of a bus project. Poorly scoped, started without the approval of the owner, to the point where tenders are about to be recommended and entered into when everything blew up. I mean, you cannot run a city, you cannot run a company with the lax financial mismanagement that's going on in this council. It is shocking. Every single project, and we get to it later today, we can't even paint the Story Bridge. That's it. More than 18 months and this council can't even paint the Story Bridge.
Councillor Johnston, I have to have a strict interpretation of separation of a debate, so please...
That was in last, thank you, that was in last year's budget that we were going to spend $45 million.
No, no, we do these separations for a number of reasons and I must have a strict separation on them. Please talk about item N when we debate it.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm talking about item L, the annual report as well and the previous annual financial statement.
Don't talk over while I'm speaking. No, yeah, yeah, I've asked you to speak to item N when we speak about item N. Please do.
Okay, but in the budget last year, council allocated millions of dollars to paint the Story Bridge and as it turns out, it's not been done.
Johnston, please, we do these separations for the benefit of all councillors on a number of occasions for a number of different reasons and I must be strict for a reason. Please don't defy me for your own enjoyment. Please stick your comments on item N, please stick to those in the section where we debate item N. Thank you.
I'm speaking to items D, items J and items L, which are all related to the 2019-20 financial year and those projects associated with that financial year, just to be clear.
No, I clarified that we were speaking about this topic later in item N. Therefore, understood.
But I can talk about what's in the budget. I'm sorry. In the budget last year, council funded road projects they've not delivered. Are you telling me I can't talk about them? These are, this is the financial report for the previous year, for God's sake. Anyway, look, this council has lost its way. I'll say this, it's become a really appalling, mismanaged corporation. It does not represent our city or our community. It's not delivering good outcomes for our city or our community. And I'm extremely disappointed that it is the political leadership of this LNP administration that is driving council into the ground. Finally, just with respect to item J, the Queensland Audit Office report, that is extraordinary. The Queensland Audit Office report uses the word deficient when it comes to assessment of the bushland buyback fund. Now, we all know that to be the case. We all know that it has been used for clear political purposes for many years. We now have an independent organisation, the Queensland Auditor General, saying that council's use of this fund, the bushland acquisition programme, is deficient. And what is council going to do about it? Nothing. How, you know, the Lord Mayor stands up and says, oh yes, we've got an unqualified audit report. We've got significant criticism of the financial mismanagement of this council and this administration is going to do nothing about it. So let me be clear. It states in here that the rating for the use of the bushland acquisition programme is deficiency. Deficiency is described as when internal controls are ineffective or missing and are unable to prevent, detect and correct misstatements in the financial statements. A deficiency may result in non-compliance with policies and applicable laws and the auditor general recommends that council take action. Now, what does this council do in light of an independent statutory financial agency saying there is a problem with the accounts? It says, no, no, we're not going to do anything. That is how this administration rolls. It tells you everything that is wrong with this, the leadership of this city's administration. The financial report goes on to talk about that it's us as councillors who are responsible for the preparation and the oversight of these budgets. And I just want to place on the record again, you are going in the wrong direction under this administration. It is, it is, every project has problems. Projects are running over budget. They're not delivered. They're delivered badly. We're not told about them. They're not being delivered fairly around the city to all wards. And yet this council is raking in more revenue than ever. I do not agree with the direction of this council. It is clear now that there are problems with the financial expenditure of this organisation. It is not in any way being managed for the betterment of our city. And when someone like the auditor general stands up and says that there is a problem, what do we get? We get some faux sort of how wonderful the Bushcare acquisition programme is from councillor Cunningham, the chair responsible. I mean, it's just going wrong. And if you haven't noticed, $6.2 million to bail out Krista Adams for the few extra hundred votes she got, that was not value for money. I swear. Meanwhile, bushland in my area with high ecological value mapped in our city plan, council won't bite back. They won't even consider it. We can't get anybody to consider protecting significant bushland. And it is extremely disappointing to watch this council and the way in which it goes about goes about the misuse of that funding. I just want to say a couple of things briefly about the annual report. Firstly, from my point of view, this council talks about the big headline issues in the city. Things like the metro and buses and better bikeways. We just don't see that money being spent out in Tennyson Ward. Yes, we get our basic resurfacing of streets and yes, we get the basic amount of money that all councillors get. But there's no investment in major parklands. There is no investment in public transport or cycling.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers?
Point of order, Chair.
What about councillor Cassidy?
Next, Chair. I'd just like to move suspension standing orders to allow me to move the following urgency motion. The Brisbane City Council urgently introduce an advertising code of conduct.
And that's being, that's being distributed? All right, do I have a second, Chair? Councillor Griffiths, an urgency resolution has been proposed by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Griffiths. Three minutes, councillor.
Thanks very much, Chair. This is urgent because today, just today, in answers to questions on notice, has been revealed the sorry saga of the politicisation of council's corporate communications here in the...
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Adams.
Can I just clarify? Can we re-debate a motion that has already been debated within the last six months? I'm sure we've debated this motion in the last six months. Just ask...
No, we can't, but the way I interpret this resolution is that it is not substantive but rather procedural. And if the procedure, if we were to accept a procedural motion, then we would have that discussion about timeliness.
Thank you. And she was the chair.
Thanks, thanks, Chair. So this is extremely urgent today because these figures have just dropped and revealing a disturbing misuse of ratepayers' dollars. So as we've just found out today, Chair, in the last financial year, the Lord Mayor has passed his photo on 62 different council documents, printed them out, distributed them at a cost of more than $1.8 million and he sent the bill to the ratepayers of Brisbane. Chair, we urgently need an advertising code of conduct because this is shocking and appalling. It is a complete waste of ratepayer funds, particularly right now as we enter one of the worst economic crises this city has faced in 100 years. This Lord Mayor clearly has no shame in promoting himself on council documents and that's why this council must step in and put on record the need for an advertising code of conduct. It's extremely disturbing also today, Chair, to find out that in these figures a whopping $1.2 million was spent on TV advertising in the lead up to the last council election. Now, that's a massive spend, the largest single spend on council TV advertising on record, I suspect. Certainly higher than any other previous year. And this spend happened in the lead up to the council election. This is outrageous. This is the politicisation of what should be untouchable public money by this Lord Mayor. The spend four years ago, Chair, was just $47,000. This is ridiculous. So Lord Mayor needs to be stopped, Chair, and it is up to this council to make sure that we put in place a strict and strong advertising code of conduct to prevent not only the waste of this money, but the political misuse of public funds.
Excuse me. On the matter of urgency, all those who believe this is urgent, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you. And those against, please say no and raise your hand.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Using call by councillor Cook and councillor Cassidy, please ring the bells. All right, councillors. Thank you. All those who believe the matter is urgent, please raise your hand, say aye and leave your hand within the frame so it may be counted.
Aye.
Please lower your hands and all those against, please say no, raise your hand and hold it there so it may be counted.
No.
Thank you. Clerks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have the voting being six in favour and 20 against.
The ayes have it. Further speakers? I believe I called someone, councillor McLoughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak on item L, the 1920 annual report, which as ever offers the opportunity to acknowledge and reflect on the hard-earned achievements accomplished by this organisation and of late in particular in difficult times. I'd like to reflect specifically on the infrastructure for Brisbane programme, which is responsible for planning and building the road network and managing parking across the city and also looking after and maintaining our significant number of assets. 5,800 kilometres of roads, over 800 signalised intersections, eight cross-river bridges and more to come soon, two off-street car parks and almost 1,000-metre parking spaces, just some of the bare statistics. But, Mr. Chair, council's traffic infrastructure, including roads, footpaths, bikeways and bridges, is valued at $11.5 billion. And the management of that portfolio is due to, and we thank the officers for their great work in this area, in the infrastructure division, and to acknowledge their hard work over the last year in particular and to talk to some of the key points that are highlighted in the annual report and to draw attention to the completion of some projects like key road upgrades, delivering safer roads and allowing our network to flow better and providing to provide a safer environment for all users of our road network, walkers and cyclists as well as those driving vehicles. Mr. Chair, in 1929... Mr Chair, in nineteen twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, projects that, to which I refer included the Murphy Road and Ellison Road Upgrade, the Winham Road Corridor Upgrade Stage One, the Player Street Connection in Upper Mount Gravette, the Chatsworth Boundary and Samuel Rhodes Upgrade in Camp Hill and five black spot projects. We accomplished some great collaborative work with schools across the city, have implemented traffic management plans with 200 schools since 2016, 27 of which were developed in the last financial year. We delivered traffic calming measures for three new precincts, increasing the number of SAM signs, the ever-popular SAM signs, to 179. With our field services team resurfaced 367 roads, completed 11 road safety upgrades around schools and installed pedestrian countdown timers at 38 intersections. Mr Chair, last financial year, Brisbane Infrastructure showed great innovation in the parking management space. New digital parking permit technology was introduced to make permits more convenient for residents. Sixty-eight per cent of permit holders have already chosen to have a digital permit. We entered into new contracts to operate more efficient and modern technology relating to parking infringements and curbside asset auditing. We switched off park, off, we switched off parking meters during the pandemic, late March through to mid-May. And that was a key element in, in helping the start of the city's recovery while saving residents' money at the same time, although at a cost to our revenue base. We also extended all existing parking permits for an extra four months free of charge in response to the pandemic. Mr Chair, this item, this item, item L, too many pages to talk about at length in, in the short time available. So I'll refrain from talking to other important elements within this annual report. But just highlighting just some in this brief discussion, the great contributions that Programme Two has made. And I urge everybody listening to pick up the annual report, have a look at it online. It makes for great reading and it shows the great accomplishments of this organisation. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? I see, councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I joined the debate to speak on items A, D, J and L. I'll start with item A, which is the Audit Report. Well, as the Lord Mayor mentioned earlier, this comes to the chamber on a regular basis and outlines the, the Audit Committee meeting. The presenters of those meetings are obviously the likes of the CEO, the CFO, the Chief Internal Auditor and QAO. Now, the nature of this particular meeting was that they were considering a number of key items, including the draft annual financial statements. The Audit Committee had a very close review of those along with input from the QAO. Obviously, the Audit Committee worked with the CFO and QAO to query any, any issues within those draft accounts. And that's what you'd expect at this type of meeting. They also looked at the financial year-end presentations on contingent liabilities and statutory losses, which once again is another requirement that we need to consider when we're looking at the end of financial year statements, just to make sure that those statements accurately reflect the financial position of council and that that reflection is supported by the QAO. We also looked at things such as organisational resilience and business continuity, which are normal elements that we address in audit committee meetings. So to councillor Johnston's point that, oh my gosh, there must be something wrong, there's 22 people at this meeting. The reality is, this particular meeting each year is one where we would expect to see quite a, a, a number of important people included in the meeting to reflect on the financial statements, the input from the QAO and the range of fairly significant matters that are discussed in this meeting. So to her point that this is somehow unusual is totally inaccurate. And as the, the rest of this report indicates, you know, it is very much part of our normal business process. And this is a process we've been following with the Audit Committee for many years now. Moving on to item D, which is the 2019/20 Annual Financial Statements and Auditor General's Report. Obviously, the purpose of today's submission is to present the final signed 2019/2020 Annual Financial Statements, which have been audited by the Queensland Audit Office. The Independent Auditor's Report is included at the back of the document. And the opinion of the Auditor General is that the financial report gives a true and fair view of the council's and group's financial position as at the 30th of June 2020 and of their financial performance and cash flows for the year ended June 2020. That it complies with the City of Brisbane Act 2010 and the City of Brisbane Regulation 2012 and Australian Accounting Standards. So clearly, the Auditor General has had an opportunity to review those statements and believe they meet all the required standards. So having audited the annual financial statements, the QAO also issued a final management letter, which is provided as a report to support the financial statements. And this is the subject of another submission today. Additionally, this item includes the year-end financial sustainability statement for the year ended 30th of June 2020. And once again, the QAO's opinion on this statement is that in all material aspects, the current year financial sustainability statement of Brisbane City Council for the year ended 30th of June 2020 has been accurately calculated. As mentioned many times in this chamber, council works closely with the QAO throughout the year to address any emerging issues. This includes regular reports through the Audit Committee meetings. And council will also work with the Auditor General outside of these sorts of regular meetings to ensure that the right financial controls are in place. And so, you know, we are obviously always targeting an unqualified report from the QAO and that's what we have achieved year on year. So these statements, the financial statements, present an excellent pictures of council's financial management. The financial position is strong at a time when many things are uncertain. It allows us to continue investing in our growing city and to help weather the storm of the Covid pandemic. We didn't get here by luck, we achieved this through sound financial management, making the tough decisions when they had to be made and ensuring that decisions weren't reckless. The financial management of this council is further supported by the independent view and inputs from QAO, as I mentioned earlier. So just to touch on a couple of items in the financial statements, there has been a significant change in the equity. And much of this has been driven by Australian Accounting Standard changes for revenue and leases that came into effect on the first of July 2019. Obviously, there are disclosures there that relate to Covid-19 and they give some good insights into where we're being impacted. Just moving on there, the, the long-term financial, financial stability statement that I referenced earlier, that's obviously been impacted by the service concession arrangements and lease accounting standards that have come in recently. And, you know, really, these results and the strong support of the QAO are a testament to our corporate finance team and the work they've done to prepare these annual financial statements. So, you know, I congratulate them on their efforts in producing yet another a great outcome in the context of the, the annual financial statements and also the QAO response. Now, to councillor Cassidy's response or comments in terms of the financial statements, once again, the narrative is all about spend, spend, spend. You know, always easily finding areas where we can spend more, but with absolutely no line of sight to the risks that we're facing in, on the revenue side of our equation. And I think that, you know, he just really needs to put his head above the parapet and have a look at what's happening around us and what kind of things can potentially impact the council's revenue over coming months and years. And they are very, very significant. Obviously, as the outcome or the, the throwback from Covid becomes more apparent, we will see further deterioration on the revenue side of our P and L. To councillor Johnston's point about debt, once again, we've said it a lot in this chamber. You know, it relates very, very heavily to accounting standard changes. Also, we borrowed for key infrastructure, which we believe is the right thing to do for the city. You know, councillor Johnston is very keen, very keen to say, oh, we're heading in the wrong direction and this administration's heading in the wrong direction. But clearly, the people of Brisbane didn't think that in March of this year. So moving on to item J, I'm running out of time. The Financial Management Report, once again, this is provided by the QAO. And I'm pleased to acknowledge that, you know, once again, we've received an unmodified audit opinion. Look, ultimately, we work very hard to make sure that our financial reporting is absolutely top quality. We work closely with the QAO to make sure that they understand what's happening in our operations and that we understand any points of concern that they might have. We work closely with them when they identify areas for improvement. And that's exactly what we'll do in the context of this particular report. There were a number of items there where they've provided us with some, some advice and guidance. And as always, we'll work collaboratively with them to address those concerns. Now, councillor Johnston sort of indicated that these were with serious concerns. Ultimately, these are issues that we will work with them on, we will respond to their observations. If we believe there are further improvements we can make, then we will make those. And that's basically what the report in front of you says today. It's really providing clarity to where we will go with this and how we will engage with the QAO to get an outcome that they're comfortable with. There are a couple of other items there where they've suggested we could improve. And once again, we will work to enhance those particular areas. Moving on to item L, in the context of the annual report, once again, this is a terrific document. It really covers a terrific amount of information that the, the residents of Brisbane might want to know about council. It's very, very thorough. Once again, you know, we continue to produce a financial, an annual report that wins awards. I think in the 2018/19 year, we were successful with a gold award and in the two years prior to that. So that's three years in a row where we've won an award for our reporting. So very, very high quality report, very, very thorough, give some great insights to what's happening across this growing city. I think that anybody who has a look at that document would appreciate just the scale of this organisation and what it's delivering for the people of Brisbane. As the Lord Mayor mentioned earlier, you know, we have a very, very big operation. We are operating in very challenging circumstances and I think the report is.
Further speakers, councillor Landers?
Mr Chair, I move that the council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have left the meeting.
It's been moved by councillor Landers, by councillor Hutton, that this council now adjourn for the purpose of afternoon tea for a period of 15 minutes commencing when all councillors have left this meeting. All those in favour, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Those against, please say no and raise your hand. The ayes have it, thank you councillors.
Thank you, Mr Chair, for the call. I'm just going to speak in relation to item A, which is the auditor's report and in particular, how it impacts with the bushland preservation levy. It's been interesting listening to the debate today, Mr Chair. It seems some of the councillors and some of the chairpersons haven't actually read this report and don't understand the seriousness of the implications of what this auditor, this independent auditor's report is saying with regards to the expenditure of bushland funding. I note first off, Mr Chair, that the auditor's report was sent on the 26th of August and he did ask, the auditor did ask, it got presented at the next ordinary meeting of council, which would have been last week. So it wasn't presented last week, but if you will recall, Mr Chair, we actually had, or I had a question in relation to this last week and the Lord Mayor deflected it. I think the Lord Mayor was very, the Lord Mayor would have been well aware of what was in this report, but he chose at that time not to reveal it, which is of concern to me. But let's have a look at some of the wording that's in that report. And councillor Johnston eloquently picked out the most important word and that is, it is deficient. So our acquittal programme, the way we utilise the bushland acquisition programme, the way we spend money there, the way we allocate and determine what we're doing with that money, it is deficient. That is significant. Residents willingly contribute this money to the city for us to use properly. And for some time now, for some time, we as the opposition have been saying that that is not happening.
Rorted.
It has been rorted. And overwhelmingly, you look in black and white, the figures, that that money has been spent in LMP electorates, overwhelmingly. And also, there's been some dubious purchases with that money. And of course, the upper Mount Cravat land comes to the fore there. The $6.2 million spent on the deputy mayor comes to fruition. That's the money that certainly, when we wrote to the auditor general, we use that case as an example of the inappropriate way that money is being spent using these funds. Now, I noticed there was an introduction from councillor Adams. I'd be interested to hear what she has to say in relation to how this money is allocated. What is disappointing about this is, it actually goes on to say that council rejects the assumptions that there is a risk that money isn't expended properly. And they don't see a problem with overheads not being allocated properly in the programme. Wow, so that's council's response, that's the administration's response. We don't see a problem here. Astounding. So that means it's going to continue. But what did the auditor say were the risks here? He said that there wasn't a consistent approach to how properties were identified for acquisition. And he also said expenses, including overheads, may not be allocated appropriately and consistently to this programme. And what we've seen over the time the LMP administration have been in power is that they've moved core funding, core projects that were funded out of rates, such as wipeout weeds, such as improving bushland, they've moved them from our core budget and taken it from this budget. So actually, we are spending far less on acquisition than what the public had thought we were. And that is the sham of what's going on here. It really worries me, and I'll come back to that word about deficiency. It worries me about the deficiency of this money. So we believe that there needs to be greater transparency in relation to this. And we believe that there should be better and clearer identified, a breakdown in how money is expended. And we also believe that we should, all of us, should be able to see the scientific research, the rigor that is backing up buying this land. Because there was none, if you will recall, with the Mount Cravat land, there was no rigor behind it. And in fact, when you went to check the files, there was no supporting documentation that actually said this land is valuable. And there was no proof that there had ever, or that there were wireless on this land. So, Mr Chair, we will keep an eye on what's going on with this particular bushland acquisition fund because we believe there are huge problems here. And I would call on the administration, I know you've got to, I know you've got to hold face and hold front and make sure that you say everything's right. I would call on you to actually look at the way this money is expended and to genuinely put in changes that will see better use of this funding, rather than it being spent on your own self-preservation. So, Mr Chairman, I would like to move an urgency motion and I'll send it to you now. Sorry, I just, the joy of technology, Mr Chairman. I've just sent it to you now, but I'll read it to you. I move suspension of standing orders to enable me to move the following urgency motion. That Brisbane City Council publicly releases the funding costs, the full funding costs, and detailed scientific reasoning relied upon for all previous, current and future bushland purchases using the bushland acquisition fund.
Negative. There's an urgency motion proposed by councillor, suggested by councillor Cassidy. Been ordered around to all councillors at the moment. Councillor Rivers, three minutes of urgency, please.
Yes, Mr Chair. Look, Mr Chair, this is urgent today because today we've actually had a report from the Queensland Audit Office, an independent office that we pay, council pays, to look at what we're doing. And they've urged us to be more transparent over decision-making when it comes to purchasing and using the bushland acquisition fund. to purchasing and using the bushland acquisition fund. This is also urgent because the residents of Brisbane expect us to use these funds properly so that we are protecting the city's flora and fauna. But I also believe it is urgent because we know over at Pine Rivers, various conservation groups which border Brisbane City say the koala deaths have more than doubled since last year and that many koalas are being hit by cars. We know that conservation experts have detailed that the main factor for those deaths was overdevelopment and the destruction of habitat. And what we need and what is critical right now is that we know that there is koala habitat on Beckett Road at Bridgman Downs that is under threat from developers. And that has been discussed in this chamber numerous times before. And we are calling for this Lord Mayor to do something and save that land. Step in and save that land. But he is refusing to do that and he is refusing to protect it. So it's urgent because there seems to be very little money left in the fund. And that we don't seem to be putting money into land that actually supports our flora and fauna, such as koala habitat. And all we need to do is look at the land at Upper Mount Cravat, for that as an example. So, Mr Chairman, this is urgent because yesterday, and I don't know if many people know this, was National Threat and Species Day. It was a day when we should all be, as representatives of this fine city, we should all be seeking to protect our native flora and fauna. So, Mr Chairman, I'm urging all councillors to support this because the public needs to know how their money's spent. They need to see the reasoning behind how this money's spent. And they need to make sure and have clarity that we are using, or the administration is using, their money properly. Thank you, Mr Chair.
On the matter of, if you're all those in favour, raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Please lower your hands and all those against. Please say no, raise your hand.
No.
The noes have it?
Division.
Division.
Councillor Strunk, I think. Please ring the bells. Councillors, all those in favour of urgency, please say aye, raise your hand and hold it there so that it may be counted.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Those against, please say no, raise your hand and hold it there.
No.
Thank you, Clive. Please ring the bell.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and 20 against.
The noes have it. Councillor Rivers, do you have a small amount of time remaining if you wish to use it?
No, no, that's fine. Thank you.
Further speakers? Further speakers? Councillor Strunk.
Sorry, was that councillor Strunk?
It was.
Oh, sorry. My speaker wasn't working all that well. Thank you, Chair. Chair, listen, I would like to speak on a couple of the items in this first group, clause D and clause L. And I think I'll start with clause L, the annual report. Mr Chairman, I worked my way through the annual report over the weekend, as I'm sure all councillors probably did. And a few things became a bit apparent to me that I'd like to raise. The first was the council's liabilities on page 39 that rose from $2.5 billion to $3.3 billion. In anyone's terms, this is a sizable increase. Now, some of that may be due to leasing arrangements or changes, but I'd like to know how much is attributed to that. Now, I do know, of course, the Chair of Finance has already spoken, but maybe the Lord Mayor can cover over on that in his concluding remarks. On page 41, financial sustainability ratio, and when we compare that to last year's figure of 92% to this year's report, has loomed at 137%. This is a sizable increase of almost 50%. When we look at some of the ratios individually, the other standout for me is the debt servicing of 7.5% projected to increase to 11.2% in this financial year. And it doesn't look to get any better in the coming years. The financial liabilities last year was 137%, and this is now forecasted to an amazing figure, I thought was a misprint or something, but it says 221%, a massive increase in anyone's terms. Mr Chair, I'm going to move on to Programme Three in this report, Clean, Green and Sustainable City, and speak about managing Brisbane's waste. I found a claim in the report, and since the commencement of Love Food Hate Waste in 2017, it says that we have reduced household food waste by 32%. A good achievement, I would have thought. Mr Chair, I would like, I would have thought you would probably want to continue a programme like that with the good work that it has done. But Chair, of course, as we heard earlier from one of our councillors, that it has been replaced. It has been dropped, I should say, and it has been replaced with nothing. Well, Mr Chair, on this side of the, this side, we think FOGA would be a great replacement programme, and so do thousands of Brisbane residents who responded to our survey. I would also like to note that there is a huge reduction in deliveries of residents to our waste resource centres. Goods that the Endeavour Foundation sell on in the tip shops, there was a drop from, there was a drop of 86 tonnes. Let's hope this doesn't somehow end up in landfill or on the side of a road somewhere as illegal dumping. Programme Four, providing quality development, the results of processing development applications, it tells us there was 4,257, which was a marginal increase. But completed planning and development certificates was down 10%. So that's, that's interesting to me as to why there would have been a decrease of 10%. And most of this, of course, whether it happened before the COVID-19 pandemic. Also, plumbing inspections was down by 13%, and I would be interested to know why that occurred as well. Now, in Programme Six, it appears that there have been a lot of animals that may be in need of a home. Last year, a particular tough year, with the rehoming numbers dropping by 1,000, which was a decrease of 40% over last year. And we know rescue animals have become very popular. And I can only hope that the lower numbers is due to availability. In community health, food safety inspections dropped by 900 this year over last year. How this isn't what, this isn't what we should be seeing in this critical area of health. I know many of us here in the chamber visit a favourite restaurant or takeaway shop, but seeing that decrease in inspections is really worrying to me. In addition to food inspections falling down, we also fell down on pool inspections, as well as a, as well as a decrease of 785 over the previous year. That is a drop of almost 30% in pool inspections. I'm sure Laurie Lawrence wouldn't take kindly to hear that. Mr Chair, there isn't, Mr Chair, that isn't where it finishes. Our frontline rapid response group, who responds to high-risk complaints, have dropped as well. Over 4,000 over last year, over the previous year, I should say. Now, you would expect that there would be some variation from year to year, but a drop of 15% is really worrying. Programme Eight, Mr Chair, seems to be ticking along in most areas. The Lord Mayor's correspondence, though, however, I've been interested to note that there was a decrease, a fairly sizable decrease from 7,400, oh, sorry, from 9,000 pieces to 7,400 pieces responded to. It would be interesting to know why there was such a sizable decrease. To finish off, Mr Chair, the report card of field services threw up increases in services, which I put down to the COVID-19. But the one that couldn't, I couldn't explain away, is the under-investment in new and reconstructed footpaths. Mr Chair, we on this side have been calling for an increase in this area, but this administration continues to fail to address the large backlog and we see it here in the report. 115 streets, this, in this particular report, which was down from 147 in the previous. And the sizable decrease in the square meterage of concrete is even worse, actually. So I'll just, I'll finish my remarks on clause L and move on to, for what time I have left, move on to clause D. Let me first start making comments in regards to the revenue and expenses of the last year's financial report. Rates and utilities charges were up $37 million even with the deferral of rates. This guaranteed income is, for the most part, must be the envy, and I've said this before, must be the envy of the other two levels of government when a financial downturn occurs like the COVID-19. Our decrease in rate take is really not impacted at all. Yes, we do give some relief and I'm sure that's appreciated, but for the most part, we don't give much of that away or don't spend much of that. It's true that fees and charges were down with some of the COVID-19 support packages to business, but the greatest source of revenue, rates and other revenue totaling $1.44 billion, increased by $51 million. Mr Chair, I know the Lord Mayor has an aversion to debt, unless it's one of the legacy projects, but it's, but it's not enough to let the Pelletier state government or the Morrison federal government do all the heavy lifting. We're in an economic crisis and we should be doing more. Mr Chair, investing 4% of our rates and charges of new money isn't a real response to this crisis. Now, if we look at expenses, employee costs were up by 1%. And with the rate of, with a generative increase, that really is, that's really a decrease in wages, if you look at it. It doesn't look good for employment with council in these challenging times, especially when the Lord Mayor has frozen wages. I'm sure that the business.
Councillor Strunk, councillor Strunk, your time has expired. Further speakers? Further speakers? The Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Thank you to those who contributed towards a discussion on these items. It's increasingly clear that depending on who you listen to, there's two extremely divergent views on how things are going in council and the condition of our finances. And, you know, if you, if you listen to the opposition, you would be forgiven for believing that the sky is falling and that everything's terrible and that the financial situation is incredibly weak and deteriorating rapidly and that everything's out of control. Because that is the narrative that Labour councillors continue to put forward or attempt to put forward. But the reality is that their narrative is not based on any kind of fact and is not backed up by any kind of external or independent assessment. It is purely their political narrative to suit their political purposes. And if you actually have a look at, okay, what is being said about council's financial statements, council's financial position and our financial sustainability, we will absolutely confirm that council is in a very strong situation in very challenging financial and economic times. But it is the organisations like the Queensland Audit Office and also, on an annual basis, Queensland Treasury Corporation, that are both state government entities that both assess our finances independently. And what do they say? They don't say what Labour councillors are saying. They don't say that council is in a poor position. They say council is in a strong position. They give us an unmodified assessment. They give us the endorsement, the tick of endorsement for the way our finances are managed. And they give us a strong credit rating, year after year after year. And so whatever Labour might say in a debate or a political debate like this, go to the Queensland Audit Office, go to the Queensland Treasury Corporation, and you will see that council is in a strong position. Now, I've been quite clear about the fact that the position has been deteriorating economically. And that will impact, no doubt, on council's finances because flow-on effects in the economy do impact on us. And it may be the case that the economy gets worse before it gets better. And that is exactly why we have a buffer zone when it comes to our budget. And it's something that I absolutely make no apology for. Labour, when they talk about the surplus, it's quite fascinating, Mr Chair, to hear, particularly councillor Cassidy's narrative on the surplus. He claims that it is some kind of bizarre thing to want to have a balanced budget or to have a surplus budget. He claims that our financial position is helped by CBIC, yet continues to oppose CBIC and wants to shut it down and spend the money. So there's a whole lot of really quite bizarre things that are being put forward by the opposition. But in the end, when you're making an objective assessment, I did want to pay tribute to one particular Labour councillor, and that's councillor Strunk. Because while I didn't agree with what he said, his approach was quite measured. His approach was not over the top. He wasn't overcooking every single thing that he said. And he also said some positive things as well as some negative things. So, congratulations councillor Strunk for your reasonable approach. And like I said, while I don't necessarily agree with everything that you said, I absolutely appreciate the way you've approached this because it is not the case that other Labour councillors or opposition councillors have approached things in this way. They have completely overcooked the situation. It is that classic case of the boy who cried wolf. Labour, every week, wants to come in here and tell you that the sky is falling, that the wolves are at our door, and it has zero credibility, zero credibility. And the moral of the story, Mr Chair, is that when you keep doing that again and again and again, no one believes you. And that's why you keep losing elections. That is why the Labour Party keeps losing elections, because no one believes the rubbish that they say. And we saw here today an attempt to re-prosecute the same failed and discredited arguments that they used in the election campaign, as though spending $2.1 million of Labour Party money wasn't enough to get their message out. Guess what? Their message got out, people just rejected it. And saying it again today isn't going to change that. So it appears that there's been absolutely zero lessons So it appears that there's been absolutely zero lessons learned. And, you know, I guess that's their choice. But once again, I just did want to commend councillor Strunk for his approach today, which was a productive one. And I thank him in that respect. But I did want to talk about the bushland levy. The bushland levy I am so proud of. I am so proud of what has been achieved with the bushland levy. And I'm so proud it was our side of politics that started the bushland acquisition programme. It was our side. It was Sally Ann Atkinson. And let the record show that Labour voted against the introduction of the bushland levy. Labour claimed it was a giant big new tax and they voted against it. And they've hated the bushland acquisition programme ever since. They've resented it. And even while they've said they support it, they secretly resent it because it wasn't their idea. It wasn't their idea to save and protect Brisbane's bushland. It wasn't their idea to save the 4,000 hectares of bushland that have been saved since the programme was.
Totally more than you ever have.
And guess what? They come in here today and they double down. They double down and say, on the one hand, oh, look, there needs to be scientific reports before we buy any bushland. Yet in the same meeting, they suggest that we should buy a block of land without any scientific reports, without any evidence of a scientific nature. But why? Based on an urgency motion. That is their idea of a thorough assessment on the need to buy bushland. An urgency motion. And what's more, it's an urgency motion which they move with absolutely no notice at all. The nature of an urgency motion is it comes out of the blue and they put it forward. So they expect us to make a decision to buy a block of land based on no notice, with no information, with no scientific reports, yet they have the temerity to criticize the established process that's been operating.
How many weeks have we been talking about it, Lord Mayor?
Well, that's right. You keep doubling down on your failed and discredited arguments, Mr Chair.
Months and months and months.
If it was a substantive motion.
Councillors, please allow the Lord Mayor.
Here we go.
They also, by the same token, suggest that council ratepayers should pay to purchase taxpayer-owned land off to state government. We've seen that put forward time and time again, as though that's a good use of ratepayers' money. So, Mr Chair, come on. People can see through this, what it is, which is more politicking from Labour. They claim that lots of bushland is being bought in LMP wards. Why is that? Because the LMP holds more than 70% of the wards in the city. It's simple. And the people of Brisbane, the LMP councillors there. Why?
95% of the funding, though.
Because we actually buy bushland if we care about the suburbs. We invest in the suburbs. And that's why people put LMP councils in place because they do a good job of protecting local communities.
What the Auditor General says.
Bushland. They do a good job of protecting bushland and protecting the livability of our suburbs. And we will keep doing that because we're passionate about it. But I also did want to touch this briefly on advertising because, once again, another failed line that they tried to perpetuate in the council election that was discredited, where today apparently council needs a code for advertising when we already have a policy for advertising which we strictly adhere to. And they somehow seem to think that if we did the same thing as the state government, everything would be all right. Well, I don't know if anyone's been turning on the TV or listening to the radio or driving down the road and seeing the billboards being put up by the state government. But I can tell you, the state government is blanket advertising everywhere at the moment. And this is apparently the gold standard that we should adhere to. So no credibility in Labour's approach whatsoever, no credibility. It's a matter of do as I say, not as I do, from the Labour councillors. If there's any evidence to suggest that Labour would somehow be different, I'd like to see it. But all I can see is newsletters with seven copies of councillor Cassidy's face on them, newsletters with 11 copies of councillor Cook's face on them, using ratepayer money to promote themselves in their own areas.
Not $1.8 million.
That Liberal or LMP councillors would do something similar.
All right, thank you. I will now put items A, B and L. All those in favour of A, B and L, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
And that, thank you, and those against, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
You can call by councillor Cassidy. The councillor Strunk, please ring the bells. All those in favour of items A, B and L, please say aye, raise your hand and hold it there so that it may be counted.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and those against, please say no, raise your hand and hold it there so that it may be.
No.
Clerks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 20 in favour and 7 against.
Thank you. On item J, all those in favour of item J, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
And those against, please say no, raise your hand. The ayes have it. We'll now move on to the next items. The Lord Mayor, items B, F and H, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Item.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Yes, I just ask that item F be taken seriously out of for voting purposes, please.
Item B and H will be voted on together and item F will be voted on alone. We will debate item F and H as a group. The Lord Mayor.
All right, point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Yeah, there's a really bad sound problem. I'm not sure if others, it's really echoey when you speak, so.
Thank you. I will speak, I will speak to some of the people assisting me and we will attempt to address that with the Lord Mayor, who I have called, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. The three items in front of us relate to planning changes. There are two amendment packages. And there is also a change to provide the green building incentive programme that I announced in the recent council budget. The two amendment packages have been to this chamber before and they've also been out to public consultation as well. They've both been around since last year, or in some cases even earlier than that. As you know, the process with these amendment packages can take some time. And so there shouldn't be too many surprises in here because we would have seen this information before. And there is also a public consultation that occurred. Major Amendment Package C captures a range of changes to the planning scheme to improve their clarity and interpretation of existing provisions and ensure the most current methodologies and assessment criteria are used. Streetscape hierarchy provisions have been updated to provide greater certainty about required streetscape standards so that new development delivers well proportioned and comfortable and safe pedestrian environments. To further protect Brisbane's heritage and traditional character, consideration will be given to protecting commercial character buildings constructed after 1946. And the boundary of these places will be extended to protect awnings and other significant features in the road reserve. So once again, we see another item coming forward where we extend protections on our character and heritage. And that has been our consistent record of extending and adding more protection time after time, year after year, providing further protection for our heritage and for our character. And in this case, previously, buildings constructed to 1946 were given some protection. But we acknowledge that there were some really high-quality buildings built after that time which are definitely worthy of protection and have heritage merit. And so we're extending that. But we're also extending it to make sure that they're, some of the features like the awnings and build-outs over the footpath area are protected because they are important parts of the overall building and the overall character. The bushfire overlay code has been updated in line with changes to the state planning policy to ensure consistency and provide clear direction on assessment methodologies. Air quality modelling and assessment criteria for service stations and industrial developments has been updated in line with emerging technologies to prevent the pollution of the environment and ensure the wellbeing and health of residents. One example of this is the previous need to, in a service station, to capture all stormwater runoff into a tank and then to have that tank pumped out and taken away on a regular basis. There is now good technology in place which allows for treatment of that runoff to occur on-site. And so we've adapted the scheme to make sure that can occur where people want to take advantage of that new technology, the filtration and cleaning technology that exists. The public consult, sorry, air quality modelling and assessment criteria were also updated as well. And public consultation on package C took place from July to September last year. And major C has received state government approval as well and is presented in the Chamber for Adoption and Gazettele. Item H covers the major amendment package E, which has a wide range of issues here. It's E for everything. There's lots of different components in here. For example, the provision of car share spaces in new residential development across the city to further support the rollout of car sharing schemes in new buildings and developments. There's increased requirements for landscape areas and minimum dimensions for deep planting in new developments, particularly multiple dwelling developments. The multiple dwelling code is being restructured to make the intent clearer and to facilitate better design outcomes. And we all support better design outcomes. There's changes to the emerging community zone, which will ensure development outcomes are compatible with the intended character of the area and are more reflective of the surrounding types of development that have occurred. There's also an extra 180 new significant landscape trees added to the schemes, to the planning scheme. So I mentioned before in the other amendment package, there was additional heritage protection. This item includes additional protection of significant vegetation as well. There's the inclusion of the Trifford Special Entertainment Precinct in the Valley to better protect and enhance Brisbane's fantastic live music scene. The Trifford and the New Fortitude Music Hall and other live music venues are such an important part of our economy, of our cultural offering and particularly our night-time economy. And we need to acknowledge that these are venues that need to be protected. It is sadly often the case that people will move into the surrounding area because of the great vibrancy in places like Newstead and the Valley. But then some of those people sadly like to complain about the noise that's generated by venues like the Trifford. And so it is part and parcel of living near an entertainment venue like this that some level of noise is accepted. But obviously, we will continue to have measures in place to limit that noise and to limit the impacts. But it's a case of ensuring that everyone is aware that this is such an important asset for the culture and nightlife of the city and something that we want to see continuing to operate and not to be, I guess, slowly eaten away by attrition as more and more people move into the area and then start complaining about these great entertainment venues. So that will help support our live music scene in places like the Trifford. There's changes to allow unrestricted operation in the low-impact and general industry zone. And we are seeing continued, oh, I guess, demand in industry areas for 24/7 operation. And that is good because it creates more jobs. And provided we can manage the impacts, which our planning scheme is designed to do, we want to support 24/7 operation of certain industrial businesses and commercial businesses that can help create jobs and provide economic opportunities for the people of Brisbane. There's updates to the Transport Air Quality Corridor Code, changes to the waterway corridors and also a range of administrative amendments. Public consultation was, on this, was conducted in March and April last year. And it has also received approval from the state government as well. So it's coming here as its final step. The green building incentives policy, I've referred to this previously in council. In fact, I touched on it last week and something I'm very keen to support. And also I won't go into any further detail over and above what I said last week about the same item. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I'll speak on these three items today. On clause B, the major amendment to City Plan Package C, the first of these amendment packages here before us today. This is, of course, the final stage of this package. It's been through council a number of times and to consultation and for state interest checks and whatnot. So it certainly has been through here and our comments at each step of the process have been on record and quite clear. And I do think, given this was a major amendment, and I do recognise this has been through here before, but this is the final stage of a major amendment, a briefing for councillors, or at least having this come through the City Planning Committee, which has had woefully empty agendas over the last few weeks, would have been a good thing so that councillors could certainly have had a better briefing. I went up to level 23 to look at the file and they were extensive. And we certainly did go through the details and through the submissions and all of that. But I can't imagine many councillors did do that. So in the interests of transparency and accountability going forward, having these items, having councillors briefed on these items would be good practice. On the package E, the major amendment, this package first came to council back in early 2017 and again has been through all the consultation and state interest checks. We've said previously that we've supported this. Labour have pushed for car sharing schemes in Brisbane. It was, it's been a longstanding commitment of Labour councillors to support that and have supported those amendments to include spaces for car-share vehicles in new developments. Car-share schemes certainly reduce the need for private vehicle ownership and become a mix of modes of transport for Brisbane residents. We do know that pre-COVID, Brisbane was the second most congested city in all of Australia, seeing the dramatic and drastic decline in public transport usage in our city here and very little plan from this Lord Mayor going forward as to strategies for tackling that across our city. And we do think that this will be an important mix of moving Brisbane going forward. Our concerns have been that there will need to be a follow-through on these approvals and the conditions that are approved under these amendments to ensure that developers are using those spaces for their intended purpose and that developers won't just be squipping on car parking spaces to save a few dollars. We need to ensure that a council's compliance at year one, two, five, 10 of those buildings is watertight to ensure that they are adhered to because these developers will be given a discount, a discernible discount in providing less car parking spaces, therefore making larger profits. So they need to be, they need to be enforced, these conditions as part of these developments. So we would like, we would seek a guarantee from this administration that that certainly will be the case. And clause F, the green buildings incentive policy, this has been talked about a bit over the last week or two. We support efforts to do more to encourage sustainable building design. But we are concerned about, particularly when the Lord Mayor has just spent the last hour and a half, two hours talking about how tight council's finances are, that we're offering yet another developer discount. Sustainable green buildings should be the goal of City Plan as the gold standard, not a nice-to-have being delivered through developer discount thing. They should be the standard. If the Lord Mayor wants to see more of these developments and wants Brisbane to look more like Singapore, as he often says, he should be bringing amendments to City Plan which enforce these standards as a standard. We need to be stepping up and doing more to encourage better building design that suits our climate and the footprint of new buildings that are carbon neutral. The cost of this to Brisbane residents is expected to be $7.7 million this financial year and increasing to $8.5 million next financial year. seven point seven million dollars this financial year and increasing to eight point five million dollars next financial year. So that's sixteen million dollars that will be put in the pockets of developers instead of delivering fundamental services like properly fixed footpaths or bringing back curbside collection, for instance, Chair. So we support the aim of greener building design. But we have never supported subsidies for big private developers.
Further speakers? Councillor Sri.
Thanks, Chair. I just wanted to speak a little bit on that same item, item F regarding the green buildings design incentive programme. I, I do have concerns about the, the principle that sits underneath this approach to encouraging sustainable building design. Obviously, I'm very, very supportive of facilitating a regime where developers, whether they're private developers or even state government or council, are delivering really high-quality buildings. Those, those goals there of five-star green certified or six-leaf certified rating from the Urban Development Institute, achievement of carbon neutral certification, that's all really, really good stuff. But the principle here, I think, needs to be unpacked a little bit more carefully because essentially what, what we're doing here is saying to a very small proportion of, of developers in the market is to say, if you want, you can do this and we're going to give you a bunch of money to do it. Rather than introducing what I think should largely be mandatory requirements, we should actually be saying to all developers, pick up your game, do a better job of designing these buildings to be sustainable. This approach of targeted incentives that are only going to benefit certain players in the development industry won't actually result in a general improvement to the quality of buildings across the city. And in particular, I think it, it creates a, a false narrative that the only way for these projects to be commercially viable and meet some of these sustainability goals is if we give them massive cash incentives. In fact, property developers have pretty healthy profit margins and it's possible for developers to turn a profit while getting buildings to be five-star green certified and including more green space within the project, et cetera, et cetera. They shouldn't need us to hand their money to facilitate a private development in order to meet those fairly basic building design standards, which many cities around the world have already made mandatory. So my concern here is that council is paying developers to do something that developers should be required to do anyway and which developers could be doing without this incentive. And in fact, the, the change, the, the design elements that we're trying to encourage here are things that will dramatically improve the value proposition for a lot of developers anyway, because when they design buildings that are greener, that are more environment, more energy efficient, et cetera, they're going to be able to sell those apartments for more. So we're, we're essentially funding them to do something that the market is already demanding anyway. And I'm, I guess I'm particularly concerned by the foregone revenue in this context because we're presenting this as though it's a net gain or a net benefit to the community as a whole. We're saying, oh, look, with a little bit of incentives, we can get these developments to be much better quality. But this is going to cost us millions of dollars. And that's money that would otherwise be spent on pedestrian crossings, on separated bike lanes, on new public parks, on new community facilities, on the infrastructure we need to create sustainable urban environments. And I'm particularly concerned that what the mayor is essentially doing with these sorts of initiatives is cross-subsidising this small group of property developers at the expense of other ratepayers. So it's not like that infrastructure isn't needed. The, the money that we would be collecting from these developers via infrastructure charges that would go towards planting trees, that would go towards new parks, that would go to make our public community facilities more sustainable. We're still going to have to find that money from somewhere and it's actually going to be probably from ratepayers or, God forbid, the council trying to monetise other assets and service and, and pay all other services. So I think, I, I understand the mayor's intention and I'm not criticising the council administration for trying to adopt a strategy like this, but I just think the underlying principle is wrong. We shouldn't be giving developers money to do this stuff and we certainly shouldn't be giving them discounts on infrastructure charges. We should be requiring, in fact, developers to contribute more in infrastructure charges. Because right now in the inner city, we can't even afford the cost of essential infrastructure that's necessary to cater for growth. I've referred the mayor before to the example of the Victoria Street pedestrian crossing. One pedestrian crossing is costing ten million dollars. If we start saying to developers, no, don't worry, we're going to give you big discounts on infrastructure charges because you installed some LED light bulbs and, and because you've got some extra garden beds on your roof. Where's the money for that essential infrastructure going to come from? Our infrastructure charges are already failing to, to cover the costs of inner-city infrastructure. So when you start giving infrastructure charge discounts or cash incentives in this case, you're actually digging a bigger hole for yourself long term. In terms of providing, addressing those sustainability concerns, particularly for inner-city areas, what we need is to encourage a shift away from private vehicle transport towards active and public transport. That means we need more money for pedestrian crossings, we need more money for bike lanes, and we also need to discourage developers from providing so much off-street car parking in inner-city areas near public transport hubs. I'm not necessarily speaking here about the out-of-urbs where I realise parking issues can be a bit different. But these, this green buildings incentive, the way it's structured, it doesn't include anything regarding car parking. So there could be a situation where right on top of South Brisbane Train Station, a developer creates a development that has an unsustainable and over-the-top number of car parks, has far too much car park in for the area, generates more traffic congestion, encourages more private vehicle use. And, and they could still get certified as a green building and tick these boxes and get massive infrastructure charges, even though it's a very car-centric and thus unsustainable development. So I, I just think the, the criteria here as well, when you look closely at them, they're a little bit, they, they allow a little bit too much discretion to unelected council officers. I'm specifically referring, for example, to the, the delegated powers where if the, if the development meets the criteria specified, then the, the CEO can, or a delegated officer under the CEO can essentially give that developer the money. But you'll note, for example, one of the criteria of-
No, no, not, not you, the CEO.
Yeah, one, one of the criteria, I'll just read it directly from the document. "In extenuating circumstances and at its discretion, council may consider a development as compliant with eligibility criteria three or four, where a combination of design criteria have been complied with to a sufficient extent." So that, that's a very broad and ambiguous exception to those criteria. So we've set out quite specific criteria about the plot ratios, development has to have green star certification, carbon, carbon neutral certification, et cetera, et cetera. But then we're saying, "Council may consider a development as compliant with those criteria where they have been complied with to a sufficient extent." So essentially that means that the developer hasn't complied with those criteria, but they've got some of the way there and they've got some of the way there on enough of them that we're going to give them the money anyway. And I think that amount of discretion is really concerning because it creates a situation where a savvy developer who's good at spin and can sell their project and convince a couple of council officers that it's really green with a bunch of greenwashing jargon, will be able to hoodwink the council into giving them those infrastructure charge discounts or the, or the cash back incentive, however you want to describe it. Even where the building isn't actually meeting what I consider to be quite low threshold sustainability criteria to begin with. So I think there's a better way to encourage sustainable building design. I think sustainable development, particularly high-density development, necessarily has to have a holistic approach to supporting active and public transport and the absence of any requirements around parking ratios or regarding the provision of active transport infrastructure is very concerning. But more generally, the, the, the approach here is wrong. The approach should be, let's make it mandatory for developers to have grey water recycling or onsite organic waste management or rainwater collection. Let's make it mandatory for new developers to include energy-efficient fixtures. Let's make it mandatory for developers to, to do something meaningful with their roof space rather than just leaving it bare, whether that's solar panels or whether that's rooftop gardens. But the point is that those standards should be mandatory rather than saying, oh, we're just going to give a bit of money to some developers who do some of this stuff at our discretion and without any public input. It's, it's not the right approach and I, I think the council would be better placed to look at what governments like the governments, governments in places like Singapore actually do. They don't use these kinds of mechanisms in isolation. They have a range of mechanisms that actually require a higher standard of building design and, and that's something that this council would and should be doing.
Further speakers? Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, it gives me great pleasure to speak to item H, major amendment to the Brisbane City Plan two thousand and fourteen, package E in the agenda of the E and C report. And as the Lord Mayor said in his remarks, live concerts and performances have a very special role in Australia's cultural and creative life. And I am so pleased to see that this proposed amendment supports Brisbane's thriving nighttime economy in Fortitude Valley and Newstead by adding the Trifford at seven to nine Stratton Street, Newstead, to the special entertainment area as well as lots surrounding the Trifford. Opening in two thousand and fourteen, places like the Trifford are pivotal in helping Australian performers showcase their talents, hone their skills, earn an income and provide jobs to those who work in the associated pub, club and hospitality industry. Shortly after opening, council received a submission from the Trifford requesting inclusion in the valley's special entertainment area. And in February two thousand and seventeen, this administration resolved to prepare an amendment package to City Plan to include this change. I know, Mr. Chair, that my community has been eagerly waiting for this change and I'm extremely pleased that council will today vote to adopt this amendment and formalise this change to the planning scheme. Particularly in today's landscape of the pandemic, it is crucially important to help nurture and develop live concerts and performance venues across the nation with sensible planning. The special entertainment precinct is a unique space, Mr. Chair. Brisbane is unique in having an officially designated entertainment precinct. And the Fortitude Valley area has become a nationally and internationally recognised destination for live music. It is the highest concentration of live music venues in Australia, giving a stage to some of our city's best original talent and global acts. It's no surprise then that live music venues like the Trifford generate more noise than elsewhere in our city. And there is an expectation that residents should be fully aware of this when they choose to live nearby. The inclusion of the Trifford in the special entertainment precinct will allow the venue to lawfully operate at higher noise levels permitted under the amplified venues Local Law two thousand and six, providing added protection against noise complaints and safeguarding the venue for years to come. It will also mean that all new residential construction in the area will be required to incorporate specific noise reduction measures such as extra glazing on windows and inclosable balconies to better protect occupants from the anticipated noise that will be generated from this venue now and into the future. Situated in the middle of Newstead and walking distance to James Street in the valley, for those of you who haven't been there, the Trifford is an old commercial hangar that merges its industrial identity with state-of-the-art sound techniques. Public consultation on the proposed amendment package was carried out from the fifth of March to the twelfth of April two thousand and nineteen with results indicating unified support for the inclusion of this venue in the entertainment precinct. This is a great outcome and really shows that as our city changes, we can update the planning scheme to respond. Mr. Chair, I'm sure you've heard me say in this place that Central Ward is the heart of the fastest-growing region and the fastest-growing state. And Fortitude Valley is the heart of our city's nighttime economy. Its venues and operators like the Trifford that are supplying the jobs to our local creative economy and live music is key to keeping that going. So I heartily commend item H to the chamber. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Oh, yes, all right. Just to speak briefly on items B, F and H. And I have asked that item F be taken seriatum for voting purposes. I, I did that because I won't be supporting it. I am extremely concerned about the Lord Mayor's off-the-cuff announcement about this a few months ago. Again, it looks like more corporate welfare for, for his mates. And I don't think it is leading to any good policy in Brisbane City Council. So when I talk about this council heading in the wrong direction, this is exactly what I am talking about. So let me put on the record the following. I completely support Brisbane City Council's efforts to ensure that more sustainable and environmentally friendly buildings are built right across our city. It should be a core function of City Plan two thousand and fourteen and it should be a core component of the Queensland Development Code. This is where council is getting it really badly wrong. And I agree with councillor Sri on this, you know, fairly substantively. Firstly, offering incentives by a reduction of infrastructure charges is the wrong tool. If council wants to look at making sure that these requirements are built into code requirements, built into planning requirements, that is how we should be progressing green buildings in our city. This corporate welfare doesn't work. We get perverse outcomes from it. And we should not be subsidising businesses to do something that they should be doing as a matter of course going forward. So certainly, if we were to look at changes to City Plan and also then lobby the state government for necessary changes to the Queensland Development Code, that should be the way forward. Alternatively, and, and because the loss of infrastructure fees is a huge issue for the city, that means less parks, less playgrounds, less roads, less stormwater, less contributed assets. So it hurts our city to give a discount to companies for doing something they should be doing as it is. To me, this is a little bit like, like bribing your kids to eat their vegetables. It's good for kids to eat vegetables. You shouldn't have to bribe them to do it. And that is what this council is attempting to do. I certainly want to put on the record my concern about the standards. Unfortunately, we've seen several attempts by this LNP administration to get more green buildings going and there's been some debacles down there at West End. Buildings built with, you know, plants all over the outside but no watering system. I mean, it just, it's just, you know, I think that got the five-star tick too. So I certainly have some concern over, over the standards. And yes, we're referring to the green tools out there, but they are open to interpretation. And I saw what councillor Sri saw as well. It is the mother of all performance solutions in this policy, where near enough is good enough. And council's saying, if the development's close enough, they'll let them have it. I mean, it's just ridiculous. It defeats the purpose. So I'm very concerned. We are not going to see the necessary green facilities, the necessary green standards actually being delivered. It should be a matter-
One of our to you, the Lord Mayor.
Will councillor Johnston take a question?
Take a question? No, she will not.
No, yes, I said yes!
Excuse me.
I said sure.
I'd like to invite councillor Johnson to come round to my place to get my kids to eat their vegetables. If she has a secret technique, I'd be really keen to get to know her.
I do. I do. Chop them up really small and then you put it in with the protein. That's how to do it. Now, sorry, back to where, a good question. I've, I've, I've learnt some tips from my friends. So I imagine it's hard with four, but you've got to chop it up really small and then stick it in with the mince or the chicken or whatever you're doing and it works, trust me. Building standards. I want to see real, real changes to outcomes. So why aren't we mandating solar panels? This council is allowing party rooftops all over the suburbs as well as the inner city and not putting solar panels on roofs. This is a specific planning outcome this council is seeking. Green space at ground level is, is gone in this city. And the way in which developers are getting their open space is by putting party rooftops on their buildings. It just should be mandatory that we should have solar panels on every new building built in, in the state. Um, it just should be mandatory that uh we should have solar panels on every new building built in um in the state. Certainly in our council area. Same with water tanks, same with um reticulated uh stormwater systems. All of these things are so essential. And we don't see mandatory standards either in our planning scheme or in the Queensland State Government planning scheme. And that's where we should be heading. Not this backdoor subsidising um, you know, uh uh developers. Finally, I just want to comment on the delegation. And this is an issue um that I've raised almost every single meeting for as long as I can remember. I do not support the delegation of these responsibilities back to the CEO, who then delegates them down the food chain to other council offices. We will never know. We will never know um which buildings, on what basis. Um, and that is not a transparent and accountable way uh to deliver this programme. Um, so uh whilst I support the intent of um whilst I support the intent of what is being planned here, I do not support the way in which the Lord Mayor and the L N P are going about it. They are again taking the city in the wrong direction. If the Lord Mayor had came back and said, we'll give a fifty percent discount on application fees, I might have considered that. Um, you know, but no, there's uh, there's nothing like that. Um, this is taking money out of uh the community assets that will be built to support our communities going forward and not necessarily um delivering on the sustainability and environmental outcomes that 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 is intended here. So I just think this is heading in the wrong direction. It's a flawed policy um that's been rushed. And this is the problem every single time with this administration. And this is why they are heading in the wrong direction. Um, because they just rush this stuff. The Lord Mayor has a thought bubble um and says, yep, yeah, we'll incentivize green buildings. It didn't work last time they tried to do it. Um, and it's not going to work uh this time either. I'm really disappointed that we're not seeing real and effective change within the planning scheme to deliver uh better sustainability outcomes uh for uh buildings right across, you know, commercial, retail, industrial community. Um, there is so much we should be doing as a council, as the biggest council in Queensland, um to push for better building standards. Um, we have an obligation to do that within our own council area, but we have the power to push the state government to do it. All this stupid rhetoric about George Street, and this is an issue that this council will not take a leadership role on and should be. So in my view, these incentives are not the right tool for the objective. Um, the delegation is wrong. Um, the out clause that council's giving itself, um, the ultimate performance standard that's built in here, um, these are not right. Uh, just very briefly on the um city planning packages. I just note um that there was a lot of concern about the, oh my God, where is it? Uh, the trees. And I know quite a few of my residents um raise concerns about the changes to the significant, I think it's the significant landscape overlay, significant landscape trees. I had quite a few residents who raised concerns. Um, and uh council basically only changed one of those. Certainly, I support retaining them um wherever possible. Um, the big issue here is I think that it is extremely hard for residents then to manage those trees. We're really talking about massive trees in my area. They're um really significant hoop pines and other really big trees. It's expensive, it's complex, um, there's a lot of paperwork. And I think we need a more practical scheme to help residents manage these trees. If we are mapping them, um then we should be uh providing assistance to help them uh to manage those significant trees. Um, that would be uh, that would be what I would hope. Um, certainly, we don't want them uh being lost in our communities. Most of these trees that are mentioned in my area are very, very significant trees. Um, but it puts a huge responsibility back on quite often elderly landholders um who don't necessarily have the financial resources to look after those trees. And council needs to do more to support our community um when it comes to uh caring uh and managing those trees on private property. And at the moment, it's massively complex.
Further speakers? Councillor Adams, the deputy mayor.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. And I rise obviously to speak on the three items before us. I'll start with the major amendment uh packages that we have, uh, package C and E. Uh, the Lord Mayor did touch on them quite comprehensively, but this is the two-year process that it takes to do an amendment. It is a a long process. And considering it has started uh over two years ago, um, it's interesting to see what was uh obviously important then is still important now and uh has, as councillor Cassidy said, been through several iterations. Uh, a full debate in the chambers the first time round. And uh then uh it's touched on quite a few of the things that we were talking about several years ago. Streetscape hierarchy for package C heritage and traditional character, as the Lord Mayor mentioned. The bushfire overlay code, obviously very important after our recent summer as well. Um, air quality modelling and assessment criteria for service station industrial developments. Uh, this uh consultation was in July last year. And as the Lord Mayor mentioned, the state has ticked off for that to go through council um this evening as well. Package E, again, there was a bit of debate, and thank you for that around the car-share spaces. Um, we will definitely be managing them through maximum and minimum requirements, depending on whether you're in the CBD frame or in the suburbs respectively as well. But that was a direct recommendation out of the Parking Task Force, um, which uh the residents told us they wanted to see more travel options and make it easier to get around our city without owning a car. Uh, there was it, there was uh increased requirements here for deep planting. So something again we recognised two years ago, and I think probably recognising even more greatly today here with the green uh initiatives that we see as well. Emerging community zones and what is compatible with the intending character of the area, more guidance. Um, significant landscape trees, the landscape trees that we are recognizing, approximately one hundred and eighty uh ones that are V P O listed at this point of time or at that point of time that will be now mapped uh into the city plan as well. Councillor Howard spoke very eloquently on the Trifford and the importance of expanding our special entertainment precinct uh in the valley and a little wider than the valley heart and a fantastic outcome, particularly as we step out of uh pandemic crisis mode and into getting out and enjoying our beautiful city as well. Um, we saw changes, as the Lord Mayor mentioned, in impact and general industry A zone to make sure we got far more flexibility, particularly as we see the type of industrial uses in these areas uh become far more technological and far less uh noisy and impactful on residents as well. Transport air quality corridor, waterway corridors, and a lot more. When I say package E actually stands for everything. Um, it's quite comprehensive, but as I said, it has been through the chambers before. I'd like to spend a little bit more time on item F, the green building incentive policy. And uh let's make it very clear here, this is the direction that we want to see Brisbane go. I have to say uh that uh what I heard from the councillors that have debated this issue today, that they agree with us. They absolutely agree this is the way we go. But as package E and package C clearly show, to make this a permanent amendment, um whether it's in an amendment package or in a city plan, takes at least two years. And then you start the process of a development application from
Get on with it then.
At least two years. So we're looking at four years.
Get on with it then.
No, no interjections, please.
We are getting on with it. Take the interjection from councillor Johnston through you, Mr. Chair. We are getting on with it. Right now, we are incentivizing applicants to do the right thing and build green. I have to take the comments from councillor Sri, who continued talking about giving money to a small group of developers. This is not about a small group of developers. This is about any building three stories or more, whether it's three stories, thirty stories, seventy stories and anything in between. This is not about a small group of developers. This is about everybody looking at how they can make their buildings more clean, green and sustainable. We have gotten on with the process of amendments in this space. We have spoken about rooftops, and I I know that I hear some people calling them uh party, party roofs. And uh but I think they're called special open space for people that live in the apartments that are green and inviting and are outdoors for people in multi-use dwellings as well. And we have got the amendments coming through in amendment L, which is going through the same processes as the ones we have here today on deep planting, amendment G on rooftops and green planting and all of that as well. So ultimately, we will be looking at seeing how we can put through the amendment packages that are in process at this point of time. And of course, we've got the city plan review that will be starting in the next few years. Um, if we see everybody jumping on the bandwagon, it'll be an absolutely perfect opportunity to see what uh the state government will support us in putting permanently in the city plan uh based on their planning act as well. We've taken a lot of steps in the last six months about rebuilding Brisbane's economy. And you would have heard myself and the Lord Mayor say many, many times to fast-track our recovery and boost economic activity, the building and construction industry has to be strong. And this is another way we want to see tradies and subbies continue to be in action. Make sure that they can fight the impending economic downturn that will come at the end of Job Keeper and the reduction of Jobseeker as well. This is the perfect time to be bringing in this incentive, which will offer applicants a fifty percent payment on completion of their application. Let's make that very, very sorry, not their application, the completion of their building. This is not an infrastructures um recharge uh charge where they don't pay their infrastructure charges and then they build the building. This is about the built form, done, dusted and sealed. Infrastructures fully paid to council. And then they must show certification that they have actually reached what we have put into this criteria. And I can assure you, this criteria is absolutely above and beyond what is required to demonstrate excellence in design and sustainability. It's not something that anybody should just do as a standard. It is a very, very high standard um to reach this uh these ratios. Obtain a five-star minimum for Green Building Council of Australia. That is a certificate. Recognized worldwide. And through you, Mr. Chair, to councillor Johnston, if you want to cut down your operational energy usage in a green star project, one of the easiest ways to do that is solar panels. So absolutely an option on here. Not something that we need to put in our criteria, because very clear in the certification as an option for a renewable in the Green Building Council five-star minimum. But the five-star minimum is only for residential. Again, too easy to get for commercials. If you are looking at a commercial, you need to look at the sixth leaf Envirodevelopment Certification. Again, a formal, nationally recognised certification for clean, green and sustainable. Then we have the council's criteria and sub-elements, thirty-one of them under the Buildings That Breathe, with a moving ratio depending on the size of your building and the G F A there as well. Achieve zero net carbon emissions. Certified again by the Australian Government's Climate Active Carbon Neutral Standard for Buildings. Now again, we heard completely from councillor, continually from councillor Sri, through you, Mr. Chair, questioning the council officers' professional integrity in their specialty about whether they could determine whether some of these things were met or not. These are certificates. Zero net carbon emission starts from the moment you turn the-
Point of order, councillor Sri.
Will councillor Adams take a question?
Councillor Adams, will you take a question?
No, I've got uh a very uh short time left and plenty more to say. Um, on top of that, we have got green plot ratios, which are not small, as you can see in the criteria that we have there today. We want to see not only aesthetically beautiful buildings, we want to see good green and sustainable buildings. This level of sustainability make them more energy efficient and cheaper to maintain in the long run. And again, agree with councillors today, more attractive for people in Brisbane to buy as well. So we want to be the envy of Australia. We want to see this new development come into Brisbane. There's been a considerable amount of work through you, Mr. Chair, to councillor Johnson, who said we have rushed this to make sure that we've got it right. And we've spoken to many stakeholders across the various groups involved um through U D I A, P C A, real estate, uh all of the stakeholders that would be looking at uh what is uh working here. This is something that is workable but is to an extremely high standard as well. I would like to thank, to take this time to thank all the officers who have worked so hard to develop this scheme. Andrea Kenefak, Dyke Harry, the chief planner, and of course, the Design Brisbane team. Their integrity and their professionalism in knowing this information and getting it right is outstanding. And I look forward to the most beautiful buildings in the world being built here in Australia.
Further speakers? Further speakers? The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's been uh, it's been really interesting to hear the debate on these items, particularly uh on the green building incentive uh item. And I just wanted to touch on a couple of points in relation to that item. Uh, in um a number of the comments made, uh it was uh claimed in a simple term that um council was going to uh put money into the pockets of developers. Now, that's um an easy, uh I guess, spin line or political line to use. Um, but that's not actually how the industry works because uh costs imposed in the construction of new developments and buildings are passed on to buyers. Uh, so if this does anything, it helps keep the cost of new development down.
Oh, you are joking. You are joking.
Absolutely. And 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 councillor Johnston, um you-
Rubbish!
You claim today to be an expert in uh feeding children vegetables. Um, and now you're claiming to be an expert in housing affordability. Uh, but I can tell you, you're neither of those things. Um, I appreciate the answer to your, to the question I asked. Because it's actually relevant in this case. A number of people are-
Point of order, Chair.
Uh, a point of order, councillor Sri.
Will the mayor take a question?
Lord Mayor, will you take a question? No, he's declined. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. A number of people have suggested that the way to get green buildings is to just force people to build them. Um, and I think it was councillor Johnston that um used the example of feeding vegetables to children. Um, well, when I asked her how she suggested doing that, she didn't actually say to force them to do it. Um, and she would be right in that respect because I know through my own personal experience um that when you try and force some, something on someone, you don't always get the intended outcomes that you would expect. Um, as a good Aussie myself, uh I've always insisted that my children eat wheat bix for breakfast. And I can tell you through experience that uh forcing wheat bix on them has unintended consequences. Uh, you and I know that it's healthy and a lot better than some of the other sugar-loaded uh uh breakfasts that um some people eat. Um, but uh forcing it on the kids has some unexpected consequences. And as to forcing certain standards on development, um to this day, uh poor Wolfgang will not eat wheat bix. Um, and five years later, he has never had wheat bix after the day I tried to force it on him. Uh, he was sitting in his, in his high chair, two hours later, not eating his wheat bix. Um, but the reason this is relevant is simple. If you try and force something on developers, then one of two things will happen. A, either the development doesn't happen at all because it becomes financially unviable. Or B, those costs will flow directly onto the buyers of the property. It's not rocket science, but that's what happens. And so uh I can tell uh all of you in this chamber that at the moment, the biggest challenge we have in the building and construction industry is that we are about to face a cliff of new projects simply not starting. We are about to face a cliff where lots of workers, including lots of union workers, are about to lose their jobs because building and construction will simply not be happening in the private development sector. Uh, we know that um the commencements are slowing down. We know that there are tens of thousands of Brisbane residents that are employed in the building and construction industry that rely on these jobs. And we are about to see a whole period of time with potentially not much at all happening. And that means mass unemployment, flow-on effects throughout the community.
Yep.
Tradies out of work.
Point of order, uh councillor Sri.
Thanks. I just wondered if the mayor will take a quick question.
Lord Mayor, will you take a question? No, he's declined. Lord Mayor.
Uh, and that that has real flow-on effects in the community. Uh, and so this challenge, um we've already taken a hit in expected infrastructure charges revenue in the budget, uh a hit of about sixty million dollars. And why is that? Is that because we've been giving discounts out? No. That's because development simply is not going to be happening this financial year. And this incentive program is all about supporting- And this incentive programme is all about supporting not just the development industry or the building and construction industry, not just the jobs employed in that industry, but it's about supporting sustainable building, sustainable green buildings. So it's about specifically pointing out something that we want to encourage and want to support and putting an incentive in place. Now, I know as a father that I was able to get Octavia to eat wheat bix. Why? Because I put some honey on top. And guess what difference that made? Little bit of honey made the wheat bix go down and she gobbles down her wheat bix every day. She has no idea it's healthy for her, but that honey made all the difference. So this incentive will help support jobs. It will help support the green and sustainable building industry and provide more affordable housing of a higher standard. It's like honey on the top of wheat bix. It is a good thing to support our city and our industry at a time when they need it the most. And councillor Johnston, I do, and Nina does grind up the veggies in with the protein and it works a treat. Not because we're forcing it down their throat, but because we're incentivising them to eat it because it tastes great. So in this case, I would simply say we're having a bit of fun, obviously, in this debate, but.
What point of order?
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Claim to have misrepresented.
We're having a bit of fun in this debate. I'm misrepresenting her, obviously, Mr Chair. But this is all about supporting the right kind of building and construction and supporting the masses of jobs that are employed in the industry. And in fact, councillor Cassidy, lots of union workers as well, who are employed in building these buildings. And.
Oh, you hate them then?
Oh, no, we, we love to see people employed in the building and construction industry. We absolutely.
You just hate union members, that's all.
I, I, I don't particularly like union hacks, but I do like union workers because they're the ones actually doing the work on the tools. But we support the building and construction industry because it creates jobs, creates opportunities for families. There's a big flow on effect in the community, a big flow on with the tradies that are employed right across the city. And I remember in, in the council chamber a few years ago, it was a few years ago, we had a representative from the CFMEU as the council speaker, the public speaker one day. And he was speaking in support of the building and construction industry. I remember that distinctly. And so it should be of concern to all councillors that we're about to see a cliff where commencements in the building and construction industry are going to be way down. That means jobs are going to be jeopardised, people's livelihoods are going to be jeopardised. And so in supporting this initiative, you're also supporting a targeted investment.
Point of order.
High quality building.
Point of order to you councillor Murphy.
Chair, will the Lord Mayor take a question?
Lord Mayor, will you take a question?
Everyone wants to ask a question. Because it's you councillor Murphy, yes.
Please proceed.
That's great. Thanks, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, could not we just give everyone that loses their job in the building and construction industry a job at the Brisbane City Council? And then give them a 2.5% pay rise because that will stimulate economic growth and that will mean everyone has a great time. Can we not do that?
Which, which party are you? You, you sound like you're from the opposition, but I reject that suggestion wholeheartedly. We know on this side of the chamber councillor Murphy that you can't employ more public servants to stimulate the economy. That's not the way it works. We can't give everyone who's out of work a job in council. And it is not basic economics 101 to do that. It is economic irresponsibility, irresponsibility 101. But anyway, I'm getting distracted. This incentive programme will support the right kind of building, sustainable buildings. And it is not an upfront payment by any measure for these things. It has to be certified. So we are talking about the investment, the risk being taken upfront by the builders, them putting their own money on the line upfront to get these projects up. And if they meet certain standards, then they will pay lower fees to council. That's what we're talking about here. So it is very clear that they have to cross certain hurdles, they have to meet certain standards. And that is appropriate because, as I said, it's all about encouraging the right kind of sustainable buildings as opposed to just an open slather. But the real challenge that we face here as a city when it comes to building and construction is that we are going to see fewer and fewer buildings being started. That is going to have an impact on housing affordability, no doubt, going forward as supply, the increase in supply drops off. And so we are introducing this target initiative to not only support the people employed in the industry, but to support the buyers and to keep quality buildings, quality homes, affordable homes as well.
Councillor Johnston, you had a misrepresentation?
Yes, the Lord Mayor stated that I suggested that we should force children to eat their vegetables. I actually stated that I believe they should be incorporated into the meal in little bits, just like the sustainability measures in the Plan Code.
All right, I will now put items B and H. All those in favour of B and H, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Thank you. And those against, please say no and raise your hand. The ayes have it. I'll now move to item F. All those in favour of item F, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All those against, please say no and raise your hand.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Councillor Adams and councillor Johnston, please ring the bells. On item F, all those in favour, please say aye and raise your hand and hold it there so that it may be counted.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And please lower them. And all those against, please say no, raise your hand and hold it there so that it may be counted.
No.
Aye.
Thank you. Clarks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 20 in favour, 2 against and 5, 5 extensions.
The ayes have it, the ayes have it on items B, F and H. We will now move to items C, I, M, N, O, E, G and K. The Lord Mayor.
A point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of councillor Johnston.
Oh, the Lord Mayor's getting sorted. Could I ask that item N is taken seriatum for voting purposes?
N separately.
Sorry. N.
N, yes.
And G. And both separately, please.
Councillors, I'll say, I'll now say this again. When it comes time to vote, we will vote on C, I, M and O and then together and then individually and separately on E, K, G and N. The Lord Mayor, when you're ready, please move the resolution.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Item C relates to the lease premises to expand the Carandale Library. The, the current, sorry, this tenancy will expire on the 12th of April 2021. The new lease will commence on the 13th of April 2021 for a term of seven years. The Lessore has agreed to counsel renewing both its current lease at the shopping centre and also an additional section next door, which is currently vacant. The section next door will allow the expansion of the library to approximately 1,900 square metres. Carandale Library is one of the most popular and well patronised libraries across the city. And it will allow us to rise up to meet the community demand, in particular the demand for things like meeting space as well. So the new lease will incorporate both the current library and the additional premises. And the tenancy represents the most suitable site. It's a well established and well known location which brings lots of people not only to the library itself, but also it's easily accessible by public transport being very close to the public transport interchange at Carandale and easily accessible not only by public transport, but also by bike and on foot and by car as well. So it's in a well located position. The, the previous arrangement was based on a, an outcome achieved through the development assessment process when Carandale Shopping Centre was established. One of the conditions related to the provision of a library at a peppercorn rent. And obviously, that arrangement does not relate to the new section of area that's adjacent to the existing library. And so that's been done on a, on a commercial basis, but is a good outcome for the residents of Brisbane and the people that use the Carandale Library. Item E relates to the contracts and tendering report for July 2020. And a number of really important projects proceeding throughout procurement process here and the reporting on occurring. Anything from the construction of the Wallytake Park upgrade to Forest Lake desilting services, to the repair of the Jumisoli Bike Way at Shields Canal in Najee, to the reporting on the extension of the bus advertising licence for a period of time. That's covered in a separate submission as well in further detail. But what I'm particularly excited about is the koala research partnerships programme, where we're doing work with the University of Queensland, the Federation University of Australia and the University of the Sunshine Coast relating to koala research. It was such an honour to be on site in the Belmont Hills Reserve recently with councillor Fiona Cunningham to have a look at the work that is being done when it comes to koala research. One of the things that is occurring in places like Belmont Hills is health checks of koalas. So the koalas are being tracked down, given a checkup by a vet and specialists to make sure that they are in good health and good condition. We also, through that process, determine if they have been exposed to the chlamydia disease, which is a problem across the koala community. If they are, then there's treatment put in place and then those koalas can be released back into the reserve that they came from. But also, the koalas are tracked with a, with a tracking device so that we can monitor where they are, how they're moving and learn more about the movement of these precious animals in our urban environment. Koalas, they can be notoriously hard to, to find and track. And so this programme really does help when it comes to us understanding more about how they move across the different areas of our city. And also to keep track of the health of those koalas as well. So there's some really exciting work being done through our universities and we're investing 1.1 million dollars into that programme. So I'm particularly excited about that. I want to commend councillor Cunningham for being the champion of that project and the officers for, for making it a reality. And moving on, so we have. Item B relates to the proposed sale of surplus council land at 161 Kerry Road, Archerfield. This is a 718 square metre block of vacant industrial land, zoned as general industry. The land has been identified as underutilised and surplus to council requirements and therefore suitable for disposal. It's located in the Archerfield Airport precinct and the Acacia Ridge Archerfield neighbourhood plan and has flood and waterway corridors in the overlays. There is an adjoining landowner, or there's only one adjoining landowner, which is the owner of 269 Beatty Road, Archerfield. And in this case, we are able to, by law, sell land that is surplus to our requirement to an adjacent owner. And so this process is being proposed today. Item I is the human rights policy. Councillors would be aware that the Queensland Human Rights Act 2019 commenced on the 1st of January 2020. The act recognises the inherent dignity and worth of all human beings and the equal and inalienable human rights of all human beings. It's all, it's also recognised that human rights are essential in a democratic and inclusive society that respects the rule of law. And so what councillor is doing is responding to that legislation to put in place a policy that is responsive to the, the new legislation at state level and making sure the council is compliant with that legislation. Obviously, council has a, a long record of respecting the diversity of our residents and encouraging and supporting a tolerant society. And so this is a continuation of things that we are already doing. But obviously, this new policy helps us respond specifically to the new legislation that's in place. Item K is the bus advertising licence agreement I referred to before. The, the submission before us proposes an extension to the existing arrangement. Currently, bus advertising is done in agreement with JC Deco Australia. And this is proposing an extension of between 12 and 24 weeks. So a minimum of 12 weeks, up to a maximum of 24 weeks. The purpose of the submission is to enter a arrangement with the existing provider to extend that arrangement. And the contract was previously with APN Outdoor, which has then become part of the JC Deco network. So our previous advertising contract was APN. APN is essentially part of JC Deco under the current arrangements. This submission will allow council to work with JC Deco to develop a solution to improve the amenity for passengers. One of the things that we've been keen to work on is to determine the best way to make sure that we can balance the needs for enhanced visibility for bus passengers. And, and also to ensure that there's good return on a council asset to the ratepayers of Brisbane as well. So these, the current contract effectively involves JC Deco placing advertising on council buses and the ratepayers of Brisbane receiving some of the benefits from that, but also TransLink receives some of the benefits as well. And that is just also worth pointing out that some of the revenue from this arrangement goes to the state government. And so it is in the interests of both council and the state government to get the best outcome for ratepayers and taxpayers here for the use of a public asset, but also.
Time has expired.
Move for extension, Chair.
Incentive time is moved by councillor Landis, second by councillor Hutton. All those in favour, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Those against, please say no and raise your hand. Thank you. The ayes have it. Ten more minutes to the Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you to the chamber. One of the things we've been doing with, for example, the city glider fleet is we've changed the wrap that we put on the city glider fleet to improve the visibility for passengers. Councillors may be aware that the old city glider wrap covered the entire bus and there was concern from some passengers that, that affected the visibility at the windows. So we have developed a new wrap for our city glider fleet, which leaves a significant part of the windows uncovered and free for visibility of passengers. And it's an overall improvement to the way that this operates. We've received some great feedback as a result of that change. What we're also looking to do is to have a look at the latest technology when it comes to advertising to make sure that people can see through the advertising that is placed on the windows of buses. JC Deco has developed a new one-way signage technology and has also proposed changes to the advertising position on buses to improve visibility for passengers. And we're also assessing and trialling these enhancements before we lock into any longer term. before we lock into any longer-term arrangement going forward. So at this point in time, we're proposing for that short extension of between 12 and 24 weeks so we can make a more informed decision before we potentially enter into a a longer-term arrangement. So that's effectively what's happening here in the submission. Item M is the Howard Smith Wolves and South Bank Ferry Terminal projects. And I'm particularly excited that not only will we see upgrades to some very important facilities or the creation of a new facility in the case of Howard Smith Wolves, but we're also seeing a greater benefit for local business and local jobs with the provision of this work. Just a little bit of a history lesson for those who may not be aware. When we had so many terminals destroyed or damaged in the 2011 flood, there was a big effort at the time to rebuild a whole range of terminals. And that was funded in partnership with the state and federal governments. Federal government and state government putting in a lot of money to assist with the rebuilding of those terminals. At the time, when that whole heap of work was being done across multiple terminals, it was determined in consultation with both the federal government and the state government that the terminals should be provided with a combination of local and international manufacturing. And so that meant that part of the terminals were fabricated locally and part were fabricated overseas. This was about finding the right balance when it came to the ratepayer dollars or the taxpayer dollars. And so there was a whole range of terminals that were built in that way, based on agreement by the three levels of government. And that's how it has proceeded up until more recently, where I made a clear policy change on behalf of council that we would introduce a bi-local policy and a local support local jobs policy. And so I can announce today that these terminals will be fabricated locally and that we're maximising the local investment in these terminals. So for example, the steel fabrication, which in previous terminals might have been done overseas, is being done locally. So I think that's a great outcome. Obviously, with any kind of manufacturing, not everything can be sourced locally. There are some things that simply can't be made locally or are not able to be sourced practically locally. But in this case, we're actually making a deliberate attempt so that the maximum amount of work is being done locally, including steel fabrication. And so this is a good outcome in terms of supporting local business and local jobs at a time when it is needed. That does obviously come at a slightly increased cost for the project, but it is one that right now is going back into the economy, supporting local jobs and local business. So these terminals will be procured and constructed. They are funded in the budget and I look forward to them seeing to seeing them delivered, benefiting the people of Brisbane. Item N is the Story Bridge Restoration Project, the cancellation of the SCP. Now, this is an interesting example of what is effectively a one-of-a-kind project and a one-of-a-kind asset, where council has a clear record of doing the right thing to restore our key assets and to protect our heritage. This building that we're in, well, that I'm in at the moment, City Hall, is is an example of how we've invested in our strategic and iconic assets and restored them and done the work that's necessary. Councillor Cassidy's ward has the Shaun Cliff Pier, which is another example of a great, fantastic city asset which we invested in rebuilding. And Story Bridge project going forward is another significant city asset that we're committed to protecting and restoring. Now, some councils in the past have suggested that this is simply a new coat of paint for the Story Bridge. That type of description would be seriously underselling what has to happen here. This bridge, as a really important iconic asset, was built in a different time. And it was built in a time when lead-based paint was used heavily. And it is now a time when every scrap or skerrick of lead-based paint must be captured as it comes off the bridge. So the bridge has effectively got to be stripped down piece by piece, the lead-based paint removed, and then a new, more modern covering added. Now, the difficulty of this process is that, as I said, every part of that lead-based paint has to be captured. So the work has to be done in an enclosed environment by specialists. And there is a lot of risk associated with the job like this because you don't know what you don't know when it comes to an old asset like the Story Bridge. And so in the tender process that we initiated, it was quite clear that the level of risk being factored in by the bidders was extreme. And so it became clear that the ratepayers of Brisbane would be paying a significant premium for that risk, simply because the the extent of this job and the extent of erosion of the bridge, corrosion of the bridge and repairs to the bridge was, at this point, not entirely known. And so we have sensibly and responsibly decided to terminate that tender process and take a different route, which will see the risk more effectively managed and a better outcome for the people of Brisbane and the ratepayers of Brisbane. This will involve us kicking off the work and starting the work ourselves to get a much better understanding of what each section of the bridge requires, to get a much better understanding of exactly the costs and to help de-risk the process. So I think this will be a sensible outcome. We have chosen the right time to stop this process and the right time to protect the ratepayers of Brisbane and their interests and the right time to protect this iconic city asset, the Story Bridge. So we will be doing the work, or the early stages of the work, to get a very clear idea on the extent and the cost of each section that we do, which will then help us de-risk the project going forward and have a clearer understanding of exactly what is involved. So as part of this, we have procured a a large gantry that is going to be attached to the bridge to allow the bridge workers to commence this process in-house. This should be something that councillor Cassidy should absolutely love, Mr Chair. We're doing something in-house that previously we were going out to tender for. This is exactly what he's been banging on about. So I'm sure he'll be very supportive of this. But ultimately, I think this is the best outcome in this particular case. And my view is very pragmatic. I don't have a fixed view on whether jobs should be done internally or outsourced. I think each project should be looked at on a case-by-case basis. There are some jobs that are better to be done in-house, there is no doubt about that. And there are some jobs that are better to be done in partnership with the private sector. And so in this case, we're opting to do the initial stages in-house, get a better understanding of the true extent of the work that needs to be done. And then we'll make an assessment down the track with that knowledge on the best way to go forward. On the one hand, we might decide to do the rest of the bridge in-house. Thank you.
Move for extension.
I have a a motion put by, I move by councillor Landis, second by councillor Hutton. Lord Mayor, did you want an extension?
Oh, look, I really, literally only had a few more words to say, so I can probably go without it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, councillors. I suspected that was the case, so we will carry on. Are there others? Any other speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. We'll speak on all of these items here before us tonight. So clause C, the lease premises for the Carrondale Library. This lease doesn't expire, of course, until April next year. The the renewal is coming early to enable a fit-out, which seems reasonable. Seven-year lease with gross rental of $800,000. That's significant, but just like the Mount Omni Library last week, this Lord Mayor is quite clearly not as good at negotiating a commercial lease than Lord Mayor Solly was because the current lease rental at the Carrondale Library is $1 a week, plus utility charges as part of that 20-year lease it was initially entered into. And that's going to jump from $1 a week to $800,000. So certainly, we're very grateful for previous Labor administrations for setting up Brisbane's suburban future so well in investing in these suburban libraries and for so long having such little onus on the ratepayer for those. We'll be supporting that item, Chair. Clause E, the contracts and tendering, a report to council. I won't go through each and every one of these this time because that seems like an exercise in futility. With this administration, they are not willing to provide the information that is required for councillors to to have confidence that these, all of these contracts have been entered into appropriately. There's 10 there contracting out almost $20 million worth of work. Of the 10, two of them were sole sourced, that is, they didn't go to market. We don't know whether they were competitive tenders that would have come in cheaper or better for this for this council, for ratepayers. They're from minor plant, minus the disposal of contaminated soil for Windsor Park. But again, there is very little detail on any of these contracts. Again, nothing on file on Level 23 of Brisbane Square. After delays, the Koala Research partnerships, part of these contracts before us today. But again, no real detail of what exactly will be provided. Another Lord Mayor spoke briefly about that, but this is an item that was committed to so long ago and has faced such significant delays and no information is provided about what is actually going to be to be included in this contract, whether it is making up for all that lost time or not and what it will be delivering. The only exception in the contracts and tendering report is the bus advertising contract, which is coming through in the Stores Board submission later in the ENC, which I'll talk briefly on in that clause. The clause G, the sale of the land at Kerry Road, Archerfield, to an adjoining landowner, a 718 square metre parcel of land, which sits inside a seven hectare parcel of privately-owned land. Quite a bizarre situation here. The the land at 161 Kerry Road is zoned general industry and is impacted by overland flow and a waterway corridor. I am prevented from divulging how much council is being offered for the land compared to how much council has had the land valued at, given it's been deemed commercial in confidence. However, the report does state it is considered a good financial outcome for council. It's interesting to note the adjoining landowner sought council's approval to include this land in their development applications to council, which council is still assessing. The applications are to change the subdivision configuration, which was submitted about 12 months ago. And the other submitted in April this year is to carry out operational works for filling and excavation on the site to re-profile the existing retention basins. Clause I, the approval of the human rights policy, Chair. This item is only before us today as a requirement of the Queensland Government's Human Rights Act of 2009, which came into operation on the 1st of January 2020. The Lord Mayor and his LMP administration have poor form in this area. We saw that recently when the Lord Mayor failed to act on offensive language and wording of petitions concerning drag time, a drag story time in council libraries earlier this year. In fact, they're still not taking action. Online petitions now bear a new disclaimer from council stating, and I quote, "Petitions express the views of the head petitioner and may not represent the views of council." According to ENC Minutes, when people submit an online petition, it's up to the head petitioner to confirm if they're meeting petition guidelines, not and there is no assessment of whether it meets council's guidelines in that council is hosting those petitions on the website. It shows that this administration is all talk, no action when it comes to human rights, Chair, if they are prepared to put the onus on the head petitioner to manage these matters. Human rights, the council human rights policy for us today is merely lip service as long as the LMP administration continues to abdicate their responsibilities to the Brisbane community. We support the policy coming to council, but it's the actions of this administration that are simply not good enough in this space. The bus advertising licence agreement, clause K, Chair. This is a sweetheart deal with a French advertising giant, JC Deco. This is the company that brought up City Cycle, which was, at the time, that councillor Shrunna was the finance chair and negotiated. This deal was, we were told, as Brisbane residents and ratepayers would be, cost neutral. Fast forward all those years and the bill for that cycle scheme is rapidly approaching $20 million in the red. And that's after, that's after JC Deco have taken their cut of it.
We've lost them.
Purell Air Asia.
Councillor Cassidy, I kind of stopped you there. We lost you for about 15 seconds. Is your speech written down? Do you want to say that again? We've held your timer.
Sure. Can you hear me now, Chair?
Okay, just your screen froze for a moment there, so.
Yeah, okay. So, thanks, Chair. This this deal from JC Deco, who operate City Cycle, we were told that this scheme would be cost-neutral when councillor Shrunna, the finance chair at the time, introduced this. It has now cost us $20 million and counting. The, this is the same company, JC Deco, which plastered Brisbane buses with the Purell Air Asia campaign titled Get Off in Thailand. And that was back in February last year. This advertising contract is not going to a local supplier, but a French one, so much for bi-local, their chair. The contract is also not going out to market, and it's another sole-source contract. So Labor certainly doesn't agree with the LMP's approach on this contract, on any of those measures. On another issue of the bus advertising, we have said, if the forum will say it again, ads on buses shouldn't be blocking commuters' views out the window by covering windows. It's not good enough to simply say they'll use a different type of wrap, so it's slightly easy to see over those windows. If cities all around the world can make advertising on buses work where they don't cover windows, we think Brisbane can as well. And paragraph 93 of the report shows that the community agrees with that sentiment. It's about time the administration listened to the community and supports Labor's calls to stop ad wraps over any windows on any buses. Clause M, Chair, is the Stores Board submission, Construction of South Bank Howard Smith Wolves Ferry Terminals. This submission is for 20, almost $26 million contract with Fitzgerald Constructions. Australia to build those ferry channels, South Bank and Howard Smith Wolves, as we've heard about, it's a 15-month contract with that defect period of course after. According to the report, there is a high risk concerning the piling works at Howard Smith Wolves and a medium risk at South Bank. Medium risk for the landslide conditions of the interface with the South Bank Ferry Channel and a medium risk for time and cost delays to the event programme Howard Smith Wolves. And we know from this Lord Mayor's personal track record and overseeing projects and this administration generally, when it comes to piling in and around the Brisbane River, that often leads to cost blowouts and delays on projects like we've seen on Kinks and Smith Drive. So we certainly hope that these contractors have taken this Lord Mayor's personal record into account when they're quoted for these jobs. We're glad to see that this administration has certainly learned from the error of their ways when they approved prefabricated works in China for the New Farm Ferry Terminal. And we called it out at the time, and the Lord Mayor has confirmed tonight that we were dead right in calling that out at the time. This time, the plan is for these terminals to be made locally in the Brisbane and Ipswich area, which is a good outcome. And, you know, it's okay, it's Ipswich down the road, certainly not China. And so that's a good thing for our southeast Queensland economy. Labor welcomes this and would like to see more real locally-made products. Bi-local is more than just a supplier, a desk and a phone in Brisbane. We need locally-made where possible to support local industry. On the Story Bridge Restoration, Chair, clause N. This item is to cancel the tender process for the major repainting works for the iconic Story Bridge, instead bringing these works in-house to reduce the risk associated with the condition of existing caddings, as we've heard about. That process for the tender began 18 months ago. There must have been some significant costs, both for council and the four companies that bid on the tender for it, only to be cancelled. The Lord Mayor crowing about the fact that this is now being in-house and done within council. Well, we could have said, I told you so. We've been saying that for some time, Chair, on this sort of central council work.
Cassidy, your time has expired. Councillor Strung? Please, your time, move by councillor Strung, second by councillor Cook. All those in favour, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. Those against, please say no and raise your hand. You guys have it. Councillor Cassidy, ten minutes.
Uh, thanks, Chair. So Labor wants to see more uh, more contracts like this brought in-house, and this is a great example, um, where. Um, this sort of basic council work can and should be done in-house. Uh, we can have a workforce that conducts uh. This basic council work on time, on budget, uh, and with the full supervision of council. Um, this is certainly a good outcome and I, I know the Lord Mayor was trying to be a bit glib before, uh, when he said, I would think this is a good outcome. Uh, but it genuinely is, and this goes to the point that we have been raising for some time now, uh, Chair particularly, at the moment when. Um, we need job security uh, for people here in Brisbane to be able to contribute to the economic recovery. More work like this is certainly welcome. Uh, finally, clause I, the uh, the final Stores Board submission for the um, public transport business intelligence solution. Um, this submission is to approve the contract for the I T system for the bus fleet. Um, the overall estimated expenditure is um, two point seven million over five years. Um, we, as a council, have entered um, into a number of contracts with Net B. Uh, for uh, the bus I T system since two thousand and seven, um, and this item is to enter another five year contract um, to take us to twenty twenty-five. It's the same um, bus I T system that TransLink um, has been using. Their con- their contract finishes up in June twenty twenty-three, um, but I think it is important um, that uh, there is that continuity and so we'll be supporting this item. As there is a low risk to council, uh, that has been identified should TransLink terminate that existing uh, contract. And I think that's just about it.
Further speakers? Councillor Allen?
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. I um, joined the debate on uh, item uh, G and item I. Now. Um, councillor Johnston raised a point earlier about this specific site at one sixty-one Kerry Road and. Um, in terms of how long council's owned the land, it's since nineteen sixty-six. And uh, the land is not currently used and is surplus to council's requirements. So um. As noted, this item relates to the proposed sale of surplus council land at one sixty-one Kerry Road Archerfield. Site is seven hundred and eighteen square meters of vacant industrial land, zoned as general industry B. It is located in the Archerfield Airport precinct of the Acacia Ridge Archerfield neighbourhood plan and has flood and waterway corridor overlays. As councillor Cassidy mentioned, there is only one adjoining landowner to the land, which is two ninety-six Beet Hill Road Archerfield, owned by Fraser Property Australia. If approved, the site will be offered to sale to an adjoining landowner and sold at or above valuation. The contract terms will be twenty-one days. City legal has confirmed that the site does meet the requirements to apply section two two six. One of the City of Brisbane Regulation two thousand and twelve as an adjoining landowner sale because it meets the following conditions. It's an identified flooding constraints over the site. Fraser Property Australia is the only adjoining landowner. The offer is above market value. Disposal is in accordance with sound contracting principles. Also, the current access easement, which you'll see on the schematic, is to be extinguished. Um, moving on to item I, um, the human rights policy. Um, the Queensland Human Rights Act of two thousand and nineteen commenced on first of January twenty twenty. Um, council has obligations under this act, um, as it is a public entity. The act works by placing obligations on the three arms of government, the legislature, the judiciary and the executive, which is public entities. The act is designed to ensure that human rights are considered in the development of laws and policies, in the delivery of public services and in government decision-making. The act protects twenty-three human rights, including but not limited to right to life, rights in criminal proceedings, freedom from forced work. Right to education, property rights, et cetera. Whilst the act provides that it is unlawful for a public entity to make a decision which is not compatible with human rights. It does recognise there will be instances where a public entity cannot reasonably act differently. In decision-making by reason of statutory provisions. For council, this means we must develop manageable and achievable strategies to build a human rights culture. And ensure that decision-making and development of new local laws are compatible with human rights. The act provides that when individuals believe that a public entity has breached their human rights, they have a right to complain via an internal complaint process. There are main instances where an individual can escalate their complaint directly to the Q- uh, Queensland Human Rights Commission. Prior to any time periods having elapsed. Now councillor Cassidy made a point about the petition process. Um, you know, what I would say is that um, all petitions are reviewed, um, to the extent. Possible and reasonable against uh, relevant legislation to ensure that we're not breaching that legislation. However. You know, we continue to recognise that the, the petitions process is one that's um, uh, needs further review and uh. That process is continuing uh, as we speak, so I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston?
Uh, yes, Mister Chairman, um, I rise to speak on all the items. Hopefully I'll have time. Um, I'd just like to start with item, um, I'll start with something positive because it'll be very brief. Uh, I think that the uh, item I, the human rights policy is a very good step forward for council. The important issue now is that council. Takes practical measures to deliver on this policy rather than it just being um, rhetoric. And unfortunately, that's where council, there's been a gap between council's intention and its actions previously. Um, but I see the policy as a step in the right direction. Now, um, uh, and I'll flag, I still want the answers to the other questions and I'll, I'll come to councillor Allen's explanation in just a moment. However, the first thing I would like to do today is speak to uh, item N, uh, which is the Story Bridge Restoration Project. Um, there is no better example of uh, this administration's complete mismanagement of. Uh, projects than this item before us today. Now, in listening to the Lord Mayor, you'd think there's nothing to see here. He said that uh, we've decided on a different route and this will give us a better outcome. And he's relying, I think, on uh, on the Labor Party's um, uh, you know, desire to have things uh, delivered in-house. However, um, I have some very serious concerns about what's gone on here. Um, I asked a question earlier and I have not been given the advice yet about uh, the um, contract costs to date. Let me say this. The matter first came to council in uh, February two thousand and nineteen. Um, more than eighteen months ago. At that time, council engaged G H D to undertake a planning and advice um, project. To provide project specifications for restoration of the bridge painting system. Um, the report at the time went on to talk about how this specialist consultancy had made recommendations. Um, it was quite complex, goes into a lot of details about uh, why it was being done that way. It then goes on to say at item eleven in that report. Uh, the following, could council businesses provide the services slash works? Forty-six, what paragraph forty-six it was. No, council does not have the capacity to carry out these works. Now, um, at the time this came up, we were told it was a critically important project. That's how it's described. Um, in here, that it's essential that it be done, um, that council didn't have the capacity to do it, that we'd engaged an expert to guide us on how to deliver it. Eighteen months later, an unknown millions of dollars in expenditure. Um, there is no clear uh, way forward. Um, there is nothing in the report before us today. It is one, two, three, four, five, uh, five paragraphs plus the recommendation. And there is zero detail on what is going to happen going forward. Now, the Lord Mayor, in his um, description of this item, said council's bought a gantry and we're going to do the work ourselves. How have we gone from needing specialist consultants to saying we cannot possibly do the work ourselves to this massive backflip? How much has this council's botched project management cost Brisbane rate payers on this occasion? Um, council budgeted some forty-five point seven million dollars uh, to deliver this project. Uh, and uh, over the course of uh, several years. And I certainly would like to know how much of it has been wasted over the past eighteen months on a course of action that is undeliverable. Undeliverable. Um, and there's just not enough explanation going on here, and this is the problem with this administration. They say, hey, um, you can't criticize the officers, you can't do this. Well, I'm sorry, when I was given this paper last year. It specifically said how critical this project was. It specifically said that we needed a um, consultant to provide advice. And it specifically said that council didn't have the capacity to do it. Now, there is zero explanation from this administration about why this has all changed. The only explanation in the paperwork before us today is um, that when it went out to tender, it cost a bit more than council thought. Um, that's not an explanation of how this project could go so badly wrong. It is an ongoing problem with this administration, whether it be Kingston Smith Drive, whether it be the metro or whether it be maintenance on the Story Bridge. And it is absolutely not good enough. I am appalled that we are told last year one thing and then this year it's completely different. It's the exact opposite, in fact, of what we were told last year. And yet the Lord Mayor would say there's nothing to see here. So how much money was wasted? That's what I want to know. How much of the forty-five million dollars budgeted across four years on this project has been wasted by this council? Undertaking a course of action when all along apparently this project could have been delivered in-house. I would like an explanation and I'm sure the rate payers of Brisbane would as well, because unacceptable to say one thing. Um, which costs these rate payers millions of dollars probably, millions of dollars I'd be guessing. Um, and then next thing you rock up and go, oh, oh, we're just going to do it ourselves. Do we have the capacity to do it? Because we've previously been told, no, we do not. Um, there is still no real detail about how we're going to deliver the project. Yes, we've bought a gantry. Um, are we subcontracting the work? Is it going to be done by officers? The lack of detail in this item is seriously appalling. Is another clear example in my view of how this administration is wasting rate payers' money, how it is stuffing up major projects. And these are not good outcomes for the residents of Brisbane. Just briefly, um, with respect to the bus advertising licence agreement, here's another cracker. I can see why you had to dump fifteen items into E N C today to hide all the uh, dodgy stuff that's going on and you're just going to dump it all on us at the last minute. Hundred pages of documents.
Point of order.
Councillor Johnson is imputing motive.
Director of councillors, no councillors to reflect to uh, reflect adversely on any council, uh, council law, any council officer. Councillor Johnston.
Yeah, yeah, that's it. As soon as you say, you know, what's happening, fifteen items in E N C today, um, it's, it's masking so many problems. Um, under the leadership of this administration. There are hundreds and hundreds of pages of documents we had to wade through for this meeting. Um, and we get ten minutes to speak on items. Um, let me be clear, I will not be supporting the sale of one six one Kerry Road Archerfield. Um, I thank councillor Allen for saying we bought the land in nineteen sixty-six, but I said, what was the purpose it was used for? Telling me it's not currently used, I understand that, that was in the um, that was in the papers, but what is it currently, what was it used for? We clearly bought it for a reason, um, and I don't know what that is. Um, all I know is, uh, the land is proposed to be bought by a major developer. A major developer, and there is a major development planned on the adjacent site that they already own. Massive excavation and fill. Um, I don't know that we're going to get a good outcome here. Um, and I am extremely concerned that we're given no details again in the council report before us about. Um, what this land was originally used for. Now, it may be that surplus to requirement is somebody forgot to include this lot. In the bigger bundle when they're sold off the last lot. I don't know. That would be a reasonable explanation, but we haven't been given one. Was it bought because it was in a waterway and we wanted to preserve management of that? Was it bought for some other purpose? I don't know. And the fact that we can't get a basic explanation about why a council asset is being sold, um, is extraordinary. Um, and certainly, uh, I don't know that it represents good value for money, given the development that's going on on the site. Um, now, just with respect to the bus advertising licence, um, I don't support this item uh, either. Oh, God, this council, I swear. Um, so. Council's just saying it's all a bit hard to go out to tender on this because really there's only one person who can do it. Um, meanwhile, there've been all these little contracts that have been offered, um, an eight week term previously approved by Stores Board and that went through, um. That went through the contracts, uh, a few weeks, or this, uh, this has gone through the contracts. Uh, now we're saying we're going to do another twelve week period to trial a bunch of other things. And then another, possibly another twelve week period after that as an option in this contract. Do you know what's not in here? What we're going to do in terms of a tender after that. So, to me, the lack of detail about putting this to the market and what the long-term plan is for the bus advertising is hugely problematic. I suspect that uh, come, you know, six months later, we'll be back here going, oh, it's critical that we just roll this over. Um, J C Deco are the only ones who can do it. Um, and uh, this council is being forced into a scenario. Um, because of the way in which council is managing the contracts. Um, there is no description of public interest. That was my other question, which I'm still waiting on an answer for. Uh, and I am extremely concerned that council's description of public interest is. Um, the, it allows the company to offer a development solution to address amenity for passengers and complaints about advertising. Hell's bells, just put that in the contract tender as one of the terms. I mean.
Councillor. Time has expired.
Point of order, Chair?
Point of order to councillor Shrun.
Can you just clarify, item K is already serial item for voting purposes, isn't it? Thanks.
Uh, further speakers? Councillor McLaughlin.
Oh, thank you, Mister Chair. I uh, would like to join this debate in particular, particularly in relation to item N. Um, and I can respond to the question that councillor Johnson posed earlier at the beginning of the day. Um, the que- the answer to the question is two point, two million, two million dollars and seventy thou- two million and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, but the, the course of the project to date, uh, and that includes the recent procurement of the gantry for works to be undertaken. And previous works. Look, um, Mister Chair, this isn't a case where we're trying to hide minced up vegetables in the protein. Uh, to, to continue the vegetable analogy from earlier, um, the, I don't know what vegetable you'd like to use here as the analogy, but the, the carrot is out in the open. Uh, it's a, it's a change in the procedure, a change in the procurement process that we've ended into here. The Lord Mayor answered this uh, very well earlier. Um, the, the question is making sure we get it right in the restoration of an iconic structure in our city. Um, we embarked on a process that involved going to a significant contracting plan. And um, we've, we've taken now a different direction. The tender period, as other speakers have pointed out, was between. March and May in twenty nineteen, um, and uh, council did receive a number of submissions. Uh, the tender has submitted a number of restoration strategies, but as the Lord Mayor said, uh, they factored in a lot of unforeseen risks. And the, the prices were high and higher than the original estimate that had been provided for the work that was to be undertaken. So, um, what are we doing as a, as a consequence of that, as an alternative plan? Uh, we are doing work through field services to do a, a part of the restoration work to find out what needs to be done for the total job. Uh, and that will better inform a decision about how to go forward with a future significant contracting plan. So, that's what's happened here, uh, Mister Chair and other councillors, anybody listening, is to make sure we get it right in the restoration of. This most iconic feature in our landscape, the Story Bridge. Um, it's, it's the right way to go. Uh, the field services team. Uh, do minor restoration works across the bridge already as a whole, but. The job that needs to be undertaken for the complete restoration of the Story Bridge over several years. Does involve complete encapsulation to the point that the Lord Mayor was saying earlier. You can't get up there anymore, anymore with a, a paintbrush and a, a pot of paint and, and no uh, safety harnesses. It has to be done. In a, in a very specific way that is a specialist, uh, specialist work that. If council officers are able to do that, that's great. The work that we are asking them to do through the. The work that we are asking them to do through the, the work that is currently being done in field services doesn't amount to the whole restoration project that has to be undertaken. But it will significantly inform what needs to be done for the complete restoration. And tenderers will have a better opportunity in the future to price accordingly. That's what's happened here. It's a withdrawal of a significant contracting plan that initially went through council in twenty nineteen and to embark on this process, which is the right thing to do to make sure we get it right in the restoration of the Story Bridge. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers?
Councillor Strunk. Yes, thank you, Chair. I wish to speak on one item tonight that's already meet contracts and tendering. And let me just echo the, the words of my councillor Cassidy in regards to, you know, these contracts, there's very little information for us to make any determination as to whether or not we should be voting in favour or voting against. And it's, it's sad that that continues on. And it's probably, well, it's really, it's really been happening since I've been the councillor, I suppose, back before the current Lord Mayor became Lord Mayor anyways. But one of the items, of course, and it was, it was, it was announced in regards to these contracts by the Lord Mayor. And that was the, the rehabilitation or desilting of the Lake Forest Lake. Now, of course, I, I don't have to look at a file for this because this one I have a, I think I pretty well have an understanding as to what's, what's going to be undertaken and in the process that was undertaken to, to establish the fact that it needed desilting. So the, certainly the one million dollars, a bit over one million dollars is going, probably every bit of that is going to be needed. The lake hasn't been deserted for twenty years, near enough. And it's really built up on the lake bed, a considerable amount of nutrients, which is made up of the, of the silt that's flown into the lake over the last twenty years. It's really going to be a bit confronting to Forest Lake residences and, and other residents that come to the lake once the desilting starts because the water level's going to be, have to be dropped by about one and a half metres, which is going to expose some dry parts of the, of the lake. And so there'll probably be a lot of questions, a lot of emails flying around. Even though we've, we've done for my office every, as much as we can at this stage to, to let people know that that's going to happen and we haven't sprung a leak. But anyways, that's, that's something that the, certainly the working group, headed up by David Hamilton and a, a number of council officers that have been working on identifying where the desilting needs to happen. But there'll, there'll be some disruption as well for people walking around the lake because of the, the desilting machinery, at least initially the ones that will be working from the edge of the, of the lake wall. And of course, the lake action group, I, I just want to again take my hat off as I, every time I speak about the Lake Park precinct and the lake, that they really got things moving with this council, with their advocacy and an outcry that something needed to be done. So I'd just like to take my hat off to them as well. And for, for the time I've got remaining, I just want to again echo what councillor Johnson said in regards to the fifteen clauses that were dumped on us today. It really isn't good enough to, and I think this is the first time it's happened to me that I can recall since I've been a councillor, that we have this many items for debate. And I know, and, and of course, the debate really is stunted simply because there just isn't going to be enough time for councillors from both sides and independents and Greens to sort of debate each one of the items, which, which is really something that needs to happen. Good gracious, the, you know, just the annual report alone, we could have spoken.
Point of order, Mr Chair. Will councillor Strunk take a question?
Point of order, councillor Adams, councillor Strunk, will you take a question?
Yes, go ahead councillor Adams.
Councillor Strunk, can you just outline to us how many hours we've been discussing E and C at this point in time? And has anyone been told they could not speak on any one of these items during this time?
Yeah, well, there was two councillors in, in answer to councillor Adams' question. Yes, there were two councillors from your side, I believe, that made a, made a statement in regards to the restrictiveness of debate.
Yep, here, here, here.
So I, I think it was, it's really, if you have a look at what's happened here today, I think it's quite unprofessional the way that the, the items or the amount of items that have been given to us to debate. Because really, this is really not good democracy. Because it's important that people know who are watching or people who are going to read the transcript at a later stage or watch it at a later stage, know that we gave as much time for debate on every one of these items. And, 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 yes councillor, I'll take that interjection. Yes, we've been speaking about this since two o'clock, well, probably around about two thirty this afternoon or a little bit later. But again, generally speaking, we don't have this many items all dumped on to us all in one meeting and it's really just not good enough. I don't know who scheduled all the ones up, but I suppose the buck stop was, stops with the Lord Mayor. So Lord Mayor, please give us the opportunity to debate all the items that you bring forward to the meeting and, and not just dump fifteen of them, which is probably about three times more than we normally get to debate. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Marks?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. I just want to speak very briefly on items E and N, E being the contract and tendering for the Forest Lake desilting programme. Through you, Mr Chair, I'm pleased councillor Strunk has addressed this issue. Yes, it will be quite confronting. There's a fair bit of water that has to be drained from the lake. The planting will take place as well. So I've asked officers if they could potentially let us know when that's going to start occurring. So potentially councillor Strunk might want to join me out there with some gun boots on and we can put a few plants into the bottom of the lake. And, and then what we need to pray for after that is rain to fill the lake back up again. So hopefully that will all work to the plan as what we've talked about. Item N's a story bridge. It's a bit upsetting to hear anyone describe the work that's been undertaken there as basic work. It is not basic work by any stretch of the imagination. I was out there on Thursday. They talk about the total encapsulation of the section that they're working on, which is at the moment under a section of a car park that council owns. The scaffolding alone is like the most amazing mechanic set that you have ever seen. The restrictions they have with the buildings that are literally inches from where they're working is, is a feat in itself. The encapsulation is like a plastic bag basically wrapped around the whole system. There is not one skerrick of air way that you can get into where those officers are working. They have the biggest sandblasting machine in your life you've ever seen. They have a dehumidifier machine. Because once the council officers sandblast the paint off, any humidity gets it and the steel starts to rust again. So they're actually working in this very specific environment. All the contamination that comes off, as being mentioned, is captured. All the water that comes off of the sandblasting goes into a drum. It goes into these specially stored areas with contamination. The workers go through a very strict routine that they have to go before and after they enter the work site. We were only able to enter the work site and walk under the scaffolding when all the workers had left the site. We were certainly not allowed up there in the encapsulated area. And they're also doing, having a really great working relationship with all the neighbours, given that they're so close to them. So I want to congratulate those officers that are out there. And some of them are quite young guys. I've met a few of them out there doing this very, very important work. And I think, again, to say this is basic work is, is very disingenuous. And I want to congratulate the officers for the work that they're doing in this space. And I look to going out and seeing them again when they move on to the next section. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers?
Point of order, Chair.
Councillor Landers, point of order?
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for dinner for a period of one hour, which will commence only when all councillors have left the meeting.
Seconded.
Been moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Hutton to this meeting, council now adjourned for the purpose of dinner for a period of one hour, which is when all councillors have left the meeting. All those in private please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Will those again please say no?
No.
Nice, have it. Thank you, councillors, we'll see you in an hour.